The meeting on the Shreveport City Council has not been called to order. We will have an invocation by Pastor Councilman James Green and Councilwoman Lvette Fuller will lead us with the pledge. Stand please.
Let's pray. Thank you, God, for this day and thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for these that have come. We actually, you bless this meeting and let it be carried on in a Christ-like manner. And let us do whatever is right and whatever is good in your sight. Lord, thank you for what you've done for us and we're going to praise you in advance for what you're going to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Space the mic and your right hand over your heart or pee after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call a row, please?
Counselor.
President.
Counselor.
Here.
Counselor.
President.
Counselor.
Here.
Counselor.
Here.
Counselor.
Here.
The motion approved at minutes of the administrative conference on the 23rd and the meeting on the 24th.
Show no.
Second.
Removed by Councilman Green and second by Councilwoman Fuller. Please vote. That motion carries with seven. Does any council member have any distinguished guests or...
Chairman, I do.
Councilwoman Fuller?
First, I'd like to have Onaga Olanova up to the... Just face the microphone.
Uh huh. So, I would love to invite our community, especially business community, those who own manufacturing companies, service companies, or those who just want to launch a new business to our upcoming tech-to-market event. So, it's a series of events where we invite renowned speakers, experts from many different industries. So, this time we are having a lady from Don Breaker coming who is an expert in technological commercialization, especially in the fields of Department of Energy and Department of Defense. She has a proof, a track record of securing more than $3 billion with B to help small companies, small R&amp;D companies, to commercialize their technologies. The event will take place at the Remington Hotel and Spa on the 24th of October. I have several tickets available, so if you want to come and join, see me after the event and I will give them for free. So, right now with this event, we want to make sure that our community will know about opportunities available there for them to build their ideas and innovate in our shipper Bozier area.
Thank you for that. Now, this event, you're reaching out to industry and to entrepreneurs in the area for October 21st?
Yes, 24th.
24th November.
Yes, it's Thursday from 4:30 till 7:30 at the Remington Hotel.
Now, you are a part owner in a startup in Shreveport, correct?
Correct, yes. We have a product design and development company, so on a daily basis, we work with local inventors, entrepreneur, and service companies to help realize their business ideas.
Now, tell me, has there been any special opportunities in Shreveport that have helped you and your partners to get your start in our community?
Definitely. This community, so as you can see, I'm from South Louisiana, but I'm Russian from Kazakhstan. So, we opened our business in 2016. It was our first time and this community was one of the most welcoming. So, we had support from chambers, from business leaders, influencers. So, this community is very innovative, actually. So, we were surprised that we have such pipeline of great ideas and great technologies coming from local community. So, it just a matter for us to join, collaborate, learn, educate, and help each other.
And now, you're giving other entrepreneurs a chance to learn some more.
Definitely. So, this event was, actually, we designed this event to, a little bit from the egotistic purposes. We wanted to have it when we had our startup, right? We created it what we would appreciate, but we haven't found anything and what not to create, right, in a true entrepreneurial spirit. So, yes, the whole idea of this event is just to educate, to bring those expertise from out of state, including our local entrepreneurs, to share knowledge, to network, to partner, to identify opportunities within the community and out of it. So, cool stuff about this time, I was shocked. I have like 20 technology startups coming from all across the nation, specifically from Houston mainly, and they are seeking and they considering Shreveport as their next hometown.
Very good.
So, they want to partner. And another cool stuff, we recently got News Entrepreneur Magazine recognized us as one of the most innovative companies and we are the only company in top 50.
So, you're a top 50 innovative company for Entrepreneur Magazine?
Correct.
That is excellent. Well, I thank you for coming and inviting us for October 24th at the Remington at 4:30.
Yes, and I have tickets. I will give it to you so those who are interested can come and take advantage of this great opportunity, if you like.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you. Enjoy the meeting and I will give you tickets. Thank you.
Next up, I have Mr. Gregory Callenberg and his crew from the, from the Prize Festival.
Prize Force One. So, my name is Gregory Callenberg and I am the executive director of the Prize Foundation and this weekend, we did our Prize Fest 2019. I am happy to report to all of you, our goal for tickets was 4,000. We actually went over, can I say this, over 5,000 tickets. People from all over the country came to our city, which I am very proud of and I'm very proud of what Shreveport was able to produce for Prize Fest. I'd love, I've got a lot of people over here and I know we don't have a lot of time. I would love to introduce some folks. Is that cool? Is that good with you guys? Awesome. First and foremost, the staff that brought you Prize Fest, that's Chris Lyon over there with Film Prize, Amy O'Callahan, the queen mother of the Prize Foundation, Chris Holland, who handled volunteers in the Startup Prize events, Stephen Knight, who worked with Melissa on Food Prize and Fashion Prize, Melissa Brandon, who worked on Food Prize, Colby Dohler, who was like a Swiss Army knife of the prize. He was everywhere. We also are very lucky to have the winners from Prize Fest 2019 here. I'm going to leave you to last. This is Donna Streback. That is Donna and those are her designs for Fashion Prize, the winner of the inaugural Fashion Prize. That's Daniel Goodwill looking in the back right there. He was a rock star. I don't know why he's standing in the back like that.
Excuse me, Gregory. Gregory, take a little bit of step back from the microphone.
I'm sorry.
You'll sound better.
Okay, good. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Awesome. That's Daniel Goodwill, right there, back there, waving. And that was our, Mond Dragon was our winner for Food Prize, right? His mom is on her way. I'm sure she'll be here any second now. And then, our big $50,000 grand prize winner, the largest cash prize given for a short narrative film in the world, was James Palmer in the film Anniversary. That's right. Give him a hand. Do his hand. That's awesome. I have to say that, that one of the things that is, that is so amazing to us was watching people from all over the country, even all over the world, since we had a group in from Australia, come in and enjoy the city and see what we're about. And I think that, that it really was this culminating thing that brought Shreveport together and really showed us at our best. And we are super proud to be here in Shreveport and we are incredibly proud that the Prize Fest did what it did this year and we're looking forward to Prize Fest 2020.
Thank you so much. I wanted to showcase you, since this was just after the festival, and I just wanted to see how tired you were.
Oh, I mean, let me tell you something. We are ready to do this again like next week. I mean, it is, it is something that, that, I mean...
I'm looking at all the...
I mean, don't look at them. When you look at me, I always on me when I say that. But like, I will tell you that the energy and the glow that this town had was unparalleled. And I will tell you that what we're building is not just the best festival and competition in northwest Louisiana, not the best in Louisiana, and not the best in the United States, but we're building something that is truly world-class right here and we appreciate all your support and everything you guys did for us.
Can I comment, Councilwoman?
Please.
First of all, you do look amazing after everything that you've been through in setting up the prize, but I just want to commend you again on an amazing Prize Fest. I've been hearing it throughout the city, just how wonderful this weekend is and, you know, what downtown can be. So, I just want to thank you. You always are very generous whenever introducing me, talking about my vision for Shreveport. And I just want to commend you for your vision in doing this. I know for a fact, it had to be crazy to start this from a ground up and I'm just so happy that you stuck with it and it is what it is today and I'm looking forward to being able to assist and just watching what it becomes in the future. So, thank you for that. And the last thing, I've been made fun of so many times for standing on that box when I introduced you. People, people think I was trying to pretend to be taller and I tell everybody that you taught, you know, you had to do the mic.
I made you do that, yes. For the record, for the record today, I did.
So, I don't mind being short. I'm not trying to like pretend that I'm taller. So, yeah.
Right.
I want to commend you on an excellent festival this year. Every year, you grow. There's more events, more prizes to give away, but you also had a record number of women in the top 20 this year.
We did, yes.
I'm loving seeing the diversity in the actors, in the production groups that are coming together all the way across. You had a very diverse group of musicians and chefs as well and I'm just excited about what you all do next. So, thank you. Now, go get some, go get some rest. Not you.
Well, and I do want to introduce, where's Ryan? Oh, there he is. This is, this is our next prize. Ladies and gentlemen, Comedy Prize 2020. Get ready for it. All right. You guys ready? One, two, three. The Shreveport Police Fest! Woo! There we go. Thank you, guys. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My guests have not arrived yet, but, but to preserve time, I'd just like to invite all of you to the hub. It's located on Mylum Street. It's an amazing place. If you have a business and you don't have an office, you don't have to worry about it. They don't have a lot, you don't want to have overhead. It's an amazing place to go. I went to an event over there on Thursday last week and it was great. In fact, on tomorrow night, the governor will be there. So, that's the hub. I can't remember the address, but it's on Mylum Street and it's an amazing place for new businesses, for whoever starting a business. I mean, it's a place that you could even just go and hang out. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Fuller?
I appreciate the councilman spending time in my district, but I want to make sure that you say the Office Hub?
The Office Hub, okay.
Because there's a charity right around the block called The Hub.
Okay, The Office Hub, okay.
Make sure people get to the right place.
Yes, ma'am. I went over there last week in the rain. That's why my hair started growing. Thank you. It's an amazing place.
Thank you.
Yes. All right.
John Settle for Tealwood. Did you want me to talk about National Night Out or Mr. Pennell's resignation?
You got, you got your time.
All right. First of all, I want to say I enjoyed participating in National Night Out. I traveled or tried to keep up with the mayor and Police Chief Raymond, went to five events. Been a long time since I've been to Allendale, a long time since I've been to Moretown. I'd never been to Frindosa Drive off Pines Road and I never had been to Brushy Bayou. They do let me into Providence when I cycled. I could go on Saturdays if I only parked behind Red River Bank. I can't get into the main area. But it was a great evening and after being down here this year and seeing a small group of people, less than 100, that have come down and have made a lot of comments about how bad our community is and how divisive it is and a lot of things, it sure was nice to go in different neighborhoods and be around a lot of people that I never had been around before and to enjoy just camaraderie and carrying on and things like that. And I had good food and had a lot of good memories there. Trying to keep up with the, the police chief who gets lost was a challenge. And I realized next year, if they have this, I want to ride around with Lieutenant Mitchell because he also had in his car some very attractive U.S. attorneys that were there. And I did get to Providence before Grayson did, so there was a little bit of, of good food there. But honestly, it was a great event for me and I hope next year, our community goes to areas otherwise because we are diverse, but we do get along and it was a real tiring evening going to five events. We couldn't get to the last two, but it was very enjoyable. On another note, which I think is much more pleasant, it was discussed yesterday. A good friend of mine is James Pennell. We kind of go back a long way and if you know James, you're usually, sometimes you're embracing him, other times you want to hit him. But I called James today and we talked about his tenure on the port. As you may remember, last year, I think he tendered a resignation and Ali Tyler didn't accept it. But today, James wants to, to submit his resignation. He was on the road, so I said, "James, please send me a text so I can forward it to the mayor and do so." And I'll just read this. It's to Mayor Perkins. He didn't have your text and catching up with James, like Councilman Brad, I know he's all over the place. Mayor Perkins, this is James Pennell. Please accept this text as my resignation effective immediately from the Port Board. I'm sending this to my longtime friend, John Settle. I do not have your text number. I've asked John to read this at the council meeting today and then after forward to you, forward to you. I'm traveling today. If you need a signed letter of resignation, please advise. Thank you, James Pennell. And I told James, he's served a long time. He's had highs and lows and it's best to go out this way and it's best for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Perkins, you have any distinguished guests or comments at this time?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I have quite a bit today, so bear with me. The first thing I want to do is just reiterate a point that I made yesterday. We have more people in council today, but I think it's worth mentioning in the council Chief Raymond and I are committed to holding our officers to a higher standard. Recently, two officers who failed to meet those standards were disciplined following investigations carried out by the Shreveport Police Department. One was fired and the other pled guilty to simple battery after resigning. Oftentimes, our media cycle covers these high-profile events and they go quiet afterwards when the repercussions for those actions are, are taken. So, I just wanted to reiterate that the actions that we've seen on TV for some of our officers that are unacceptable, we have addressed them accordingly. This acknowledgement also builds more trust between law enforcement and the communities they serve and it is important to call out police wrongdoing, but it's also important to acknowledge when leadership holds its officers accountable. Just as important as it is to acknowledge officers, in this particular instance, it's just as important to acknowledge the officers that are out there doing the right things every single day. And in that vein, I would like to recognize Detective Richard Turpin for his actions in helping save the life of an eighth grade student. At this time, I would like Chief Raymond to come forward and make a presentation for
Thank you, Mayor Perkins, council members. I'd like to just read this letter of commendation for Detective Turpin. "I would like to take this opportunity to express my sincere appreciation to you for rendering aid to your fellow man, in this case, an unconscious middle school football player. On Tuesday, October 1, while off duty and watching your son play at North DeSoto Football Field, you performed CPR on an eighth grader from Bozier City. He is with his family today due to the training and ability of all involved. Thank you for stepping up, doing your parts to make sure this young man has another opportunity. It hardly seems adequate to thank you for a job well done, but I thank you for your efforts and dedication. You are an asset to this department and the community." I would like to also mention that a DeSoto Parish Deputy McCloskey, who was a previous employer of Shreveport Police Department, and his wife assisted in those efforts. So, the three of them were able to provide CPR and also administer an AED, waiting on medics to arrive and, and transport the young man to the hospital. Detective Turpin told me that he met with him today. Is that correct?
Yesterday.
Yesterday and, and he's doing a lot better.
Would you like to say anything, Detective?
I'm just glad we were there and able to assist. And if it were my son or someone else, I just hope that someone else would do the same.
Grateful for you. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Army National Guard Staff Sergeant and Shreveport Fire Engineer Ben Cotton and his spotter, Army National Guard Sergeant and Fire Engineer traveled to England in September and competed in the Tri-Service International Sniper Competition. They were one of only two National Guard teams in the United States that competed and Staff Sergeant Cotton and Sergeant Smith were the overall individual sniper team winners of the competition. I would like to congratulate them on their performance and have them stand to be recognized at this time. There they go. There they go. Thank you for representing Shreveport well. Since we're talking about firemen, I want to mention that this week is Fire Prevention Week, going from October 6th through the 12th. The Fire Department will be conducting many tours this week for children at the stations throughout the city. Next, I want to congratulate Sport Trant CEO, DeNero Washington, for purchasing a fast charger for our electric bus fleet with a state grant of $150,000 and matching funds from SWP Co. And Governor Edwards was here last week to help us mark this significant event and Sport Trant operates five electric buses at this time, the largest fleet of electric buses in the state of Louisiana. It significantly cuts down on costs for our citizens and it's way cleaner for our environment. So, thank you, DeNero, for that. Where, where are you? There you go. You can stand up now. Man, the enthusiasm is just pouring out of you. Super excited. I want to let everyone know that our next community bond meeting will be held at 6:00 PM this Thursday at A.B. Palmer Rec. Center, if you're interested in attending. And we have Burns &amp; McDonnell here today for a brief update on where we are with the consent
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, council members, for allowing me a few minutes of your time to come and speak with you. My name is Patrick Clifford. I'm with Burns &amp; McDonnell. I've had the opportunity to meet some of you, but I've been serving as the program manager through the transition of the, the new program team from the CDM Smith team that has exited. And if you recall, we came in front of you sometime in July and gave you a brief update of the overall program objectives and strategy and committed to you that we would be coming back and have regular communication. So, we're roughly about 90 days from that point, so thought we'd come here and give just a brief overview of, of what we've been doing and where we plan on going. We do have about five slides and I'm not sure if there's a way we can get them shown here.
Have you provided those to IT?
Pardon?
Have you provided them to IT?
Yeah, it's sitting right here.
There we go.
Perfect. Thank you. So, as I had mentioned, we, we've started in early July on the program. Some of the accomplishments that we've seen over the last three months is we've now opened up our office here in Shreveport. We've had our team move in early on in September. We've gone through the transition of the CDM Smith team, now fully embraced and owning the program moving forward. Very proud of an individual that we just brought onto the team. Some of my team members are sitting over there, but Willie Nwotney, he's going to be our program manager. He moved to Shreveport. Willie brings nearly 40 years of construction and program management experience to this program, so we're really happy to have him with us. We have about 90% of our long-term team in place. Roughly 85% of that team are living here in Shreveport, so we're really proud of the fact that we've been able to build the local team. That was one of the commitments that we had made to you early on. I think we had talked early on about our, our ability to bring technology to the, to the program and using that as a solution to help implement a, a better program. And so, we've been working on that strategy. We sat down with the city over this last week to, to present a number of those program controls solutions that we're going to be implementing moving forward and into 2020. The city has agreed with that approach and so we're, we're adopting those. I'll, I'll show you just a, a couple of examples of those as we go forward. We're working with the fair share team here in the city and, and working on improved reporting structures to, to improve that. And then, lastly, we've implemented a constituent issues resolution tool, which we're hopefully rolling out right now and seeing some improvements with that, but again, going to build on that as we go into 2020. So, so just a quick update on where we're at with the consent decree. You know, when we had taken over the program, it was our kind of understanding that Phase 1 and Phase 2 projects would be complete. That's not necessarily the case and so we're doing everything we can to get those fully complete. Our anticipation is that it'll be by the end of this calendar year, they will be done, but there had been some delays lagging from the previous program. Phase 3 is now, we've built that schedule for Phase 3. Those projects are going to be going out to bid, is starting in 10 days and then a rolling bidding cycle over the next three to four months. So, they're moving forward. So, that, that phase of construction will start hitting sometime in Q1 or Q2 of 2020. We're very excited about a contractor outreach meeting that we're hosting tomorrow night. I'll, I'll show a little bit more information about that, but that's to engage the construction community about the upcoming work. And we're also starting to schedule the Phase 3 projects' community outreach meetings. We're planning on having a meeting in each area prior to the Phase 3 projects going out so the community members understand what the project is and in what areas of the, the city those are going to be taking place. Here's a, the flyer for the contractor outreach meeting that we're hosting tomorrow night. Hopefully, you're aware of that, but this might be a good opportunity to even get more people aware. This will be going on tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Randall T. Moore Center. You can see on this graphic here, those are the, the projects that are associated with Phase 3. There's also a map. It's a little hard to see, but it does illustrate the communities within the city where those Phase 3 projects will be impacting. For the council members, this may be of more importance to you, but you can see here, there's three areas where Phase 3 projects are going to be, being performed and we overlay the council maps so you can see which boundaries are going to be impacted by those projects. And really more than happy to, to meet with each and every one of you as we go forward to have discussions about the needs from your communities and how we can best, you know, get this work done because we know it's a disruption to, to the constituents. I had mentioned previously a little bit about the, the technology that we're trying to bring in and here's just one example of, of a tool that we're using. We're, we're going to be incorporating geospatial technology into the program management. And here's an example of assessments that have been done on the underground pipes for Phase 4. That's the next phase following Phase 3. And from the graphic, you can see that the, the red or dark colored lines, those would illustrate pipes that are in poor condition. So, by doing this, you can kind of graphically see where the, the areas of, of most disrepair, where they're at. This tool, you can zoom in and, and get closer to see exactly where you're at. But what we're doing is we're tying in this database into the City Works database, which shows operationally where the city of Shreveport is doing any sort of work in the streets, where they're getting complaints from homeowners. And what we can do then is by tying those inputs into the work that's going to be done through the consent decree, we feel we'll have a, a more integrated solution where we can attack a problem one time as opposed to multiple times over, over a series, series of time. So, lastly, just to kind of highlight where we see ourselves going between now and maybe the next time we get in, in front of you, as I mentioned, eagerly trying to complete all of the Phase 1 and 2 construction projects. We recently got a hold of the, the rate analysis that's been done and what we're doing is currently evaluating that to determine a long-term financial plan as well as the financial capability and, and this will help us determine the capital improvement plans needed as well as how we can tie that into the consent decree requirements. In addition, we recently have gotten the hydraulic model and the hydraulic model will allow... will allow us to look at some of the assumptions that were used for the Phase One and Phase Two improvements, and then we can evaluate how effective those improvements were so that we can fine-tune the model moving forward and make sure that the investments being made into the Phase Three and Phase Four work are getting the best return to the city. As I mentioned, Phase Three project bidding is ongoing now forward. We're moving forward with the Phase Four design. The Phase Five sewer evaluation, it's being done by another consultant, but that's ongoing. And as I mentioned, continuing improvements on the controls as well as the fair share reporting, and then also working with the city administration on the regulatory discussions around the overall consent decree. So, I know I kind of threw a lot of information very quickly at you, but we wanted to just get a chance to get in front of you and kind of give you an update that the program's moving forward, and certainly are open to any comments or questions. As I mentioned, I brought not our whole team, but some of the leadership from our team, so we're here if you have any comments or questions.
Your title is program manager?
Pardon me?
Your title is program manager?
Correct, yes.
Mr. Waddle will be taking your... How did she fit in?
Willie?
Willie?
Yes, so if you recall, and I think we highlighted this, when we proposed on this project, what we had said was we were going to stand up a transition team for 90 days, as we then went and hired a local team that's going to be here. So, I've served for the first 90 days as the program manager through the transition. We now have Willie here, full-time moving forward. It'll serve as the full-time program manager. I'll still stay engaged in the program, just to...
Will Willie be there tomorrow night?
Yes, he will.
Mayor, will you be there?
I will.
We spell Willie, W-I-L-L-I-E, in Norfolk, but that's okay.
Counsel, my brother. Let me first express my appreciation for you coming and giving us this update. I appreciate it. As you know, this is the largest, I guess, economic project in the city's history in regards to the degree of work and the cost of it. I met with some members of your team. You mentioned fair share, and I just want you to elaborate a little bit more on that, because it's projected to be a billion-plus. And if we're going to, and the citizens are paying for this, do that means that we establish for them. So, I would not like to, I would like to see a great percentage of this money to be left in Shreveport. I don't want it all leaving Shreveport. So, give me some understanding of how do you intend to utilize the fair share initiatives that we have in place, and will you be initiating that model with your contracting?
The quick answer is yes, and as you mentioned, you know, the fair share program's extremely important to the city. It's been here for a number of years. This is one of the largest financial spends the city has ever gone through. And, you know, as I mentioned on the control side, so contractually, every contractor that does work under the consent decree is required to meet the fair share requirements that the city has laid out. I think previously, the program didn't do a great job of tracking that fair share spend and distribution across all the contracts.
That's true.
So, what we're doing right now is setting up systems in place that will be able to track those subcontractors under the contracts that are fair share participants, so that we can then hold the contracting community more accountable to meet those requirements. So, I think reporting is the first step, just understand where those fair share dollars are being allocated across the program, and then holding those contracts more accountable to meeting those requirements. But first step is we're just, we just got to figure out where the fair share is being distributed on the projects.
Okay, and I appreciate that. That was the response I was looking for, but at the same time, I'm going to, and I want to meet, I probably be out tomorrow night, and I want to speak with your team a little bit further.
That'd be great. I mean, there is so many things that we see going forward that we can even improve upon on the fair share to incentivize and to help build local businesses that want to participate. So, I personally have had experience in other communities around similar programs, and it is a great opportunity for small businesses in the Shreveport area.
Well, I mean, to us, it's the lifeline. It's a stimulus to have participation throughout, and I think we can be effective in helping bring up those minority firms that need a boost.
Yes.
And I'm calling on the mayor and administration to give great oversight in this commitment, Mr. Mayor, so that we, at the end of the day, two years, three, five years from now, we won't be in the same position we were when we changed project managers.
Yeah, I mean, we're really proud on our program that we have 50% of our team is fair share participants, just on our one piece of the program.
I understand, but a lot of them are not local, but opportunity, that's what I'm asking.
Yes.
Just give opportunities, okay? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilman Bradford. Councilman Vice Chair Nicholson.
Sir, I'll add my thanks to those of Councilman Brad for your being here. I think it's very helpful that Burns &amp; McDonald has come back to us 90 days after its involvement to give us an update. As you know, the initial estimate for this consent decree work citywide was in the range of $350 million. The council was advised earlier this year that the cost would exceed $1 billion. I understand that Burns &amp; McDonald is in the process of conducting an analysis to determine whether that is a good number, whether in fact the total cost will be in the range of $1 billion or something more. First, where are you with that analysis, and what sensitivity do you have of whether the cost is going to be in that range?
Right. So, when we had come here 90 days ago, I think one of the things we had talked about was coming here now to talk to that point. As I mentioned, about two weeks ago, we received the rate study that helps build into the affordability of what the city can perform. We're currently evaluating that, and we're also going through the preliminary designs of Phase Four and Phase Five, and then capacity planning beyond. I don't have an answer to your question today, but we will have an answer prior to the next time we come before you. So, I'm anticipating that sometime in early December, we'll be standing in front of you with very direct answers to that question, and we're working with the administration and everyone else here at the city to kind of pull that together. But unfortunately, we're not there yet, but that is, right now, probably, other than getting the Phase One and Phase Two projects complete, that task is our top priority right now.
I've heard from many constituents that the water and sewage rates they are paying under the present rate schedule already significantly burdens them. When you come back in December, will you also be able to tell us whether the existing rate schedule will be sufficient to pay for this program?
Yes, and that is our main goal, is to try to come up with a solution that creates an affordable solution for the community, but also meets the requirements of the consent decree, understanding that that's driving the program. And then with that, also providing other recommendations of how we can make all of these pieces work together.
Finally, my sense from talking to my constituents and individuals within the administration this year since our election is that the city and the prior consent decree management firm struggled in some cases to hold contractors accountable. For example, they would do the work below the surface and then fail to timely do the surface repairs. What is Burns &amp; McDonald's plan generally for making sure that does not continue to be a problem?
Right, so, you know, I think the root behind that answer is making sure you have strong specifications and bidding documents so that you can hold the contractors accountable. But we do know that a lot of the struggles the city has seen has been on the surface, on the restoration side, and how do you motivate the contractors to finish the piece of the whole project that everyone in the city ends up seeing and becoming frustrated with? And so, really, it's creating a solid set of bidding documents and then being able to hold those contractors accountable. And I think, you know, our techniques and some of the technology that we're bringing through the control side will allow us better visibility of the work that's going down. I think we've already tried to implement a constituent issue resolution program that we get issues brought to our attention, restoration primarily, and then we're able to communicate back quick responses and then prioritize how we go and react to that. But I think the previous program maybe got a little bit behind on all that and then had a really difficult time catching up. Our approach is, we realize that this is a major issue, and this is what we're hitting head-on from the beginning. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Councilman Nicholson. I think that's it. You know what else? No? Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, and last thing on the agenda is a pretty big item. We're going to, the CAO and the Assistant CAO are going to go over highlights for the
A quick question while they're getting ready on that. On the discussion we had with when Mr. Suttle came up and spoke on Mr. Pennell, I mean, is that a sufficient, I mean, what do we do from there? We need another?
No, legally, it's a higher standard. We'll have to get a letter of resignation from him to submit according to the bylaws of the ports board, so we'll follow up with Mr. Pennell.
Okay, so, nothing that needs to be done today? I just want to make sure we're clear, nothing that needs to be done today by this body? We just need to get...
No, nope, nothing needs to be done by this body. We just need to, we'll follow up and get a... And also, counsel, just, I think for the sake of time, if you'd let Casey get through the budget first and jot down questions, and then just save them to the end and be happy to answer any of the questions that you have. Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Sounds good to me. I think that's fine.
All righty.
All righty. We are pleased to present the 2020 executive budget under Mayor Adrian Perkins. This is our 2020 budget calendar, commencing Tuesday, November 12th at 3:00 PM is our public hearing after the passing of our budget ordinances. On Thursday, November 14th, as well as November 15th, on Friday, we'll have two days of our detailed departmental review sessions, followed by our budget adoption on Tuesday, December 10th at 3:00 PM. This was our budget objectives for 2020. The first thing is to emphasize fiscal responsibility, create a balanced budget where our revenues exceeded our expenditures, and also to provide adequate funding to what we call the mayor's PET, which is Public Safety, Economic Development, and Technology. This is a overview of our general fund. The first thing that you'll see is our summary of available funds. You may see that number, the negative $1.2 million, as our actual fund balance. I do want to give a little information on that. The estimated fund balance from the 2019 budget was actually $8.2 million. After the audit was done of the 2018 budget, it was determined that the actual fund balances was a negative $1.2 million. So, this administration actually inherited a negative $1.2 million budget. Upon inheriting that budget, in 2019, we estimated revenues to be $210 million and our estimated expenditures to be $209 million, which leaves us with a end-of-the-year balance at negative $781,000, which goes to, basically what we do again in order to predict what the ending balance for 2020, we basically do it all over again. We estimate our 2020 estimated revenues, which was $210 million, and our 2020 estimated expenditures at $208 million, which brought us to the surplus of the $1,086,900, which will be the ending fund balance or the operating reserve at the end of 2020. This gives us an overview of our general fund revenue. The biggest portions that you see are taxes, which account for 72% of our revenue. The biggest portion of those taxes are actually sales taxes at 59%. Assessments account for 5% of our revenue, charges and fines at 9%, miscellaneous at 14%. Some of those miscellaneous items could include oil and gas royalties, auction proceeds, as well as our fireman's 2%, just to name a few. The beginning balance is at 0%. We actually just talked about that. That number is actually a negative number, being negative $781,000. Which brings us to a little detailed version of that general fund revenue. If you remember me saying the previous budget that was estimated in 2019 estimated that fund balance to be the $8.2 million of what you see here, after, again, the audit was done, that number came out to be a negative $1.2 million. Just to hit a couple of the highlights on here, you know, one thing that you'll see is our total revenue being $209,493,400, which is a decrease of about $13 million in revenue. The main attributing factor to that is the creation of the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, which by creating that fund, it did exit about $9.3 million in revenue that was in the general fund. Our general fund expenditures, this gives us an overview of what those expenditures are. Of course, the biggest piece of the pie that you see are our employees, which is considered our personnel services. The next biggest thing that you'll see is our transfers out, and then our contractual services for our expenditures. This gives us a little bit more detail on those general fund expenditures, comparison between 2019 and 2020. One of the biggest things that you see, contractual services down by $9 million, that is mainly attributed to, again, the creation of the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. That contained $9 million of contractual services that went into its own enterprise fund. You also see an increase in improvement in equipments of about $1.1 million that is mainly attributed to the transfer from Streets Special Revenue Fund, which will be going to the Public Works Department. Also, transfers out increased by $1.3 million. A big contributor to that, $1.1 million will be going to the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund as a subsidy based on the feed not being enough to generate. Also, lastly, you'll see the operating reserve or the surplus of $1,086,900. These are some of the general fund expenditures that you'll see. This number actually, I'm sorry, this number actually does not include our operating reserve, so that is the true amount that we will be spending in 2020. So, when you see our healthcare contributions, that is the amount that the city is paying for health insurance for its employees. Right now, it's a up 5% for this year. Employee retirement contribution is up 2% for our ERS. For our police retirement system, it is up 1%. For our fire department, it is up 1.25%. You also will see the civil service 2% longevity increase. That is for all civil service, police, and fire personnel, and that number is at $1.2 This gives us an overview of our general fund departments. As you can see, public safety is a big piece of those expenditures for our departments. It accounts for 56% of our expenditures for our departments. Breaking those down individually, police is at $60.5 million as far as their budget, fires at $56.8 million. Public Works accounts for 9%, Spar at 8%. Other general fund departments include all other departments that are not listed, which include Executive Office, Finance, Property Standards, just to name a few. So, we'll look at the individual departments here now. The 2020 budget for the Executive Office is unchanged at $996,400. Legal Department, the budget is mostly unchanged at $1.1 million. Property Standards budget for 2020 is $3.5 million, which is unchanged from 2019. Human Resources budget, $825,900. Budget is mostly unchanged. Human Resources budget 825,900, budget is mostly unchanged. IT Department, 3.7 million, budget is unchanged from 2019. SPAR's budget unchanged from 2019. Finances budget unchanged from 2019 at 3.6 mil. General Government, you may be wondering, what is general government? General Government is basically a catch-all that does not tie directly to a department for revenues and expenses. So the change for our general government department was 56,700. Some of those increases were our health insurance increases for our retirees increased by 387,100. Also, it houses our operating reserves, which is 1,86,900. Now we're looking at our Police Department. The budget did go up by 572,500 by some of the things that we have already spoken on, which was the 2% longevity increase, the retirement increase, as well as the health Fire Department is unchanged from 2019. Their budget is staying at 56.8 mil. One note that I would have pointed out, that they are increasing their revenue by 1 million. That is mainly attributed to the ordinance that was put forth here in 2019 to catch their transport rates up globally, to be able to compete globally. Our Engineering Department budget did go up to 4.9 mil, is a change of 618,000. This is mainly attributed to the creation of our Permits Department. With the creation of the Permits Department, revenue was generated as well, which will end up offsetting that expense for the addition of the Permits Department. Also, they do include a $170 transfer from Water and Sewer for the Division Chief position. Public Works, this is general fund Public Works, which you see the change being at 13.8 million. Again, the biggest reason for that is for the creation of our Solid Waste Enterprise City Council, budget is at 1.5 mil. It has changed by 5,900. That is attributed to new carpet. City Courts, 2020 budget is changing to 3.7 million. However, the general fund portion is not changing. It still will be at 3.4 million. The reason that you're seeing a slight change in the budget is we did include the supplement of what the courts will actually send to the City of Shreveport in the budget at 3.7 Cities Marshal will decrease by 300,000. The general fund portion will remain the same at 1.5 million. The reason for the difference is no discretionary funds from the Marshal Office will be allocated in 2019 or 2020. Now we'll look at our Internal Service Fund. We'll look at an overview. We only have one, which is retained risk. So when you look at retained risk, the current year revenue is 10.4 million. The current expenses are actually 10.1 million. And the general fund contribution is 6.9 million. Well, you may be wondering, why is this number negative? The reason for this negative number is because the actuary actually gives us a liability reserve. And what that liability reserve tells us is that it takes into account of any claims that we currently have and any future claims that we may be at risk at. So the actuary sets a liability reserve at the amount of exposure that we may be at risk of. And right now, that number is at negative 27 million, which brings that balance to the negative 17 million, which is quite normal for any retained risk budget. Special Revenue Funds, this is an overview of our special revenue funds, beginning with our Riverfront Development Fund. There was an increase in the budget at 484,000. You'll see a graph. This graph that you see is our gaming revenue. What that takes into account is the revenue that we are receiving from the casinos based on in headcount. And of course, you see that number is, or that line graph is actually on a downward trend. And over the last decade, that trend has been negative 3.75% as far as the decrease in that budget. So the current year's gaming revenue, the 2020 projected estimated revenue is going to be at 8 million and, go to the next slide. Streets Special Revenue Fund, revenue is staying right at about 6.8 million. Their budget is changing about 1.5 million. 6.9 million will be available for street projects for 2020. Community Development, the budget is changing by 8.6 million. The biggest reason for that is a portion of the Choice Neighborhood Grant will be included in their 2020 budget of 7 million. Our Grants Budget, which is at 4.4 million and the change being 105,000. This is mainly, the change or the increase in the budget is mainly attributed to fire and police grants that are being increased. And then, of course, the grants for sports training airport will be included in our capital projects. MPC, their budget has decreased by 146,700. This is mainly attributed to the subsidy decreasing by 9% to 913,000. Redevelopment Agency remains inactive. That same balance will roll forward for the next year and will be 4,000. Downtown Entertainment, you see a decrease in this balance of 350,300. The main reason is because of some repairs and AC unit and roof replacement that was done in 2019 to the Red River District. However, their revenue has increased by 23%. We'll now take a look at our Enterprise Funds. Water and Sewer, that budget is actually increasing by 5.9 million, which is attributed to an increase in revenues, also an increase in sewer charges, which was actually approved by the 2014 Council Administration totaling 2.2 million. Airports Budget is decreasing by 497,000. Their total operating reserves are 6.8 million, the undesignated operating reserves at 5.1 Sports Training Budget is changing by 137,000. The subsidy from the general fund is increasing by 1% and which will take their subsidy to 6.9 million from the City of Shreveport. Golf, the Golf Enterprise Fund is changing by 242,000. The main reason for this is an increase in our memberships by 100%. Downtown Parking, there's actually a slight increase in our Downtown Parking Fund, which will go up by 29,100. And the major contributor to this is from our 2019 ordinance that was passed for our handicap parking violations that are actually, will be increasing. So, that is the main reason for the increase in our Downtown Parking Budget. Convention Center, transfer remains the same from 2019 at 1.7 million. Hilton Hotel, hotel operations and capital replacements remain stable. The Hilton Hotel is able to fund their own operations, also able to attribute 833,500 to the city to fund, help fund the debt service as well. And when you see this negative number, what this negative number is indicative of is representing the amount of debt that has not been covered by the excess revenue from the Hilton Hotel. Also, you see a slight increase in the budget that's basically due to us refinancing some debt from a variable rate to a fixed rate, which increased our payments. This is our Debt Service Fund. Our debt service did decrease by 3.9 million. Our debt service mileage right now is unchanged at 15.3 million, while our reserves are at 58 million. Our Capital Improvement, this is a list of our programs for our capital improvements. Of course, the biggest piece of the pie you see is the Sewer, which is attributed to our consent decree, which is why that program is the largest of them all. This kind of gives you a little idea of those capital improvements. When you look at the first one, Buildings Program A, you see some changes in our SPAR Arts Center. They're basically completing some projects there. That's where Shrek is actually going to be housed. And the other additions or changes in our capital improvement are majorly attributed to the local funding as well as some state and federal grants that will be attributed. Again, this is our 2020 Budget Calendar. We're inviting everyone out for our public hearing after the passing of our budget ordinances on Tuesday, November 12th. We will have two days of detailed department review sessions again on Thursday, November 14th and Friday, November 15th, following by our budget adoption on Tuesday, December 10th. That concludes our Executive Budget. Any questions?
I guess I just wanted to ask about if you can go back, and I hate to say go back over, but the contractual services.
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain that to me one more time?
The total, when you look at the total, the total was 9 million, maybe 500 something, 9.5 million, I think, total. When the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund was created, it took the Division Solid Waste from the general fund. And of that, solid waste accounted for $9 million of contractual services, which is the main reason you see that number actually decreasing, because it created its own fund.
And, okay, I know the 2%, I'm trying to get that for, the 6.9 in street projects, is that, if that goes from district to district or is that the one that just end for citywide?
Yes. Streets Special Revenue is for citywide. And those street projects are done as needed, but that is citywide again.
All right, Councilman Nicholson.
Thank you for your presentation, first of all. You mentioned the fact that at the end of 2018, after the audit was completed, we learned that we had a negative fund balance of more than a million dollars. Is that right?
That's right.
What was the budgeted fund balance? What is the difference between the negative fund balance that was confirmed by the audited financials and what we budgeted for 2018? Where was that number supposed to be? You mentioned it, but I just don't.
Yeah, that number should have been negative 1.2 million. That's based up on the audit. The estimate for the fund balance was estimated at 8.2 million.
So, how did the city miss the mark so greatly? We expected more than 8 million dollars and winded up with a negative 1 million dollars. What accounts for that swing?
I can.
Whoever would like to answer?
Sure. I can answer that question because we did do a reconciliation of the revenue shortage and the origin expenditures. And you all probably remember, I know the former council members remember when we found out that Pratt was no longer bringing their sludge to the landfill and it accounted for some revenue shortage for the 2019 budget. But by the time we started to do the 2019 budget, we noticed that in the current year for 2018, that that was already happening. So that was a very big contribution. Another thing that happened was we started to receive the increases for EMS revenue and on the other side of that is the matching funds that have to come from the city to be able to receive that increase. And so that was about $3 million that accounted for our matching funds that we had to pay in addition to the original that was budgeted through the state. So those were the major contributors.
And my other question for today, and of course, I know the members will have more during our sessions, but for today, I would like to understand what this budget does to address the city's chronic failure to sufficiently fund maintenance. You know, we've had quite a lot of discussion about that in conjunction with the upcoming bond proposal, and we've talked about the fact and heard from Ms. Regal, the Director of SPAR, that the city for many years has not budgeted enough money to take care of the buildings that we have. What does this budget do to address that issue?
So, we have two line items that are in this budget that was not in 2019. We are, of course, still hoping that the general obligation bond and the passage of it occurs because it will help us even further pretty significantly with our maintenance budget. And we want to be able to capture those savings to provide additional funding to just address maintenance. SPAR is transferring 200,000 to, I'm sorry, SPAR is going to have the benefit of 200,000 from the Riverfront Development Fund to help to keep the Convention Center maintained. So that's something that we would like to proceed forward with so that the annual maintenance on the Convention Center can occur. And then another line item is the Streets Special Revenue Fund is transferring to Public Works to help with potholes and, you know, maintenance on streets. So those are two specific line items that we have captured in the general obligation bond, the passage of it, you know, hopefully will allow us to be able to capture additional savings to pick those funds to be able to address maintenance specifically.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Councilman, I'd just like to add, is it enough? Are we comfortable with it? Not at all. But you got to realize where we're starting from. We're starting from, you know, below zero. So we are trying to find every way we can to put the city in a healthier position going forward. And, yeah, the general obligation bond plays a big role in that, but we're going to do, we're going to do what we can with the resources that we have. And, yeah, we agree with you that it is an issue.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilman Green?
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, good job.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Flur.
I think Councilman Nicholson has brought up the negative balance of 1.2 something million. And we know that we just got the external audit and we'll be able to track that, what made up that 1.27, even though I did hear you make an answer on it. The note payables went down from 3 million to 1.8. I assume that's some of those cars payments that we bought on the police cars or balances are being paid down. And so the notes payable would probably be decreasing because of that. Note payables.
Yes.
We're paying our debt on the cars that would make some of that, wouldn't it?
Those were mainly attributed to SPAR and it was one other department that attributed to that, but I know SPAR paid off about 500,000 and I believe it was, yes, here it is, 523,000 was paid off by SPAR, but 677,600 was transferred from Public Works to the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund with the creation of it. So that took the notes payable out of the general fund and it put it into its own Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, which basically why that notes payable actually went down.
Okay. And so public safety is at 56%. Came on the council, I think it was somewhere around 48%. It went to 52%, 54% the next year, and now we're at 56%. And I assume that's that 2% required by state law to the Fire Department?
That's correct.
And so we give the Police Department and City Marshals and all those two to match as goodness of our heart. And so 56% now of our budget, our total budget, is for public safety.
That's correct.
One final note, listening to what the mayor said, I hope that you all, has there been any mindset in this? Do we have any thoughts on selling off any assets or prioritizing? In particular, the golf courses that we have, could we consider in the future dialogue of pri- Could we consider in the future dialogue of prioritizing Quirby's and Huntington to get out of the golf business? I just bring that as a statement, not as a question.
Got you.
I think that's it for council members.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Casey.
Mr. Chairman, that's all our, all that we have on the agenda. Thank you for the time.
Right. I did want to note, one more, one more thing on MPC. I think, and I stand to be corrected, there was a vote, and it was confirmed that we do not have an interim MPC director anymore. Mr. Clark is now, has been voted and confirmed MPC director.
Stand up, Mr. Clark. This is a great day for me. Thank you.
All right. And I did want to call Mr. Green up from Property Standards, but I also wanted to say, I did recognize some members from West Shreveport. I wanted to say hello to you all out there. I didn't, first I just saw two or three of my regulars, and then I saw more and more. I don't know if they came to put me out today or what, but I just wanted to say hello to you all and thank you for sharing with us. Mr. Green?
My predecessor's out there.
And, oh, I saw Jeff. My other, used to be next door neighbor, good to see you, Mr. Elson. Anyone have anything relative to Property Standards from Mr. Green today? I know I sent, I sent the email right before I got here, so I didn't know if anyone else. Nope. Thank you, sir. We got our revenue collection from Ms. Jones yesterday.
Yes.
We got an answer from Ms. Krill also. Mr. Thompson, legislation to be added today?
No, sir.
All right, we now have the following requests to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've discussed, we do have an appeal concerning a liquor store at Gilbert and Kings, for which many people have requested speak. We're going to let everyone speak at the time that appeal is heard. And so right now, I'm just going to call public comments that do not relate to that. Mr. Craig Lee.
Craig Lee, 1112 Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, District B. There was an interesting article that was highlighted a few days ago. And it's about the fact that the city of Shreveport is $1 billion in debt. And the article says, "Shreveport, Louisiana, a city with less than 200,000 residents, has more than $1 billion in debt," according to the Louisiana Legislative Auditor. So it's interesting that I'm coming right behind the mayor's assistant, because the figure that the state auditor gave in terms of the deficit for last year is not 1.2 million, but $8 million deficit. Because it says that the annual net loss last year was due to 264 million in revenue. And I want to point that out. When I came back to the city of Shreveport in 1994, revenues for the city was roughly $400 million. Now we're at 264 million. When I came here, the population was about 214,000. Today it's 188,000. So we're half of the revenue. Now, it's costing to run the government 272 million, but you're only bringing in 264 million. So you had an $8 million deficit. And you got $1 billion in debt. And the article went on to say, "The deficit does not mean that the city, the third largest in the state by population, won't be able to pay its bills next year, but over the long term, its current resources cannot fund its obligations," the auditor office says. So we're continuing to add debt, and there's nothing in this bond issue that is going to stimulate economic development. So I have to ask the question, how, in the Texas West Nile virus hell, are we going to pay for these dollars? I mean, I'm trying to understand where the revenue is coming from in order to actually pay for these, this overhead. Private sector is the only way that you're going to increase this, because 70 to 80% of your labor force in the city of Shreveport and the parish of Caddo works for the public sector. They either work for the city, the parish, the state, the federal government, or NGO that gets money from one of those particular organizations. So we're in an epic downfall. And I continue to say, as I've said for the past 25 years doing this work, the number one issue that the city of Shreveport faces is racism. And until that is confronted and addressed, it's not going to matter about any bond issues that we bring to the table.
Mr. Billy Roy Wayne.
Mr. Vice Chairman, can I make a comment about that really quick?
Yes, sir, of course.
Mr. Lee, I appreciate your comments. It's interesting, I was in an intergovernmental meeting a couple of days ago. We were talking about what we can do as a community to improve Shreveport overall. And it was just a recurring theme about, a general recurring theme about making sure that we celebrate our successes and victories as much as we celebrate some of our losses. And Commissioner Jackson actually brought up a pretty interesting point. He was at an International Economic Development Conference, and he was talking about when these articles come out about Shreveport's the most miserable place, or we're in a billion dollars of debt. And he said, "It's usually targeted." There's usually some company that's looking for that community to come into a community, and it's competing against another community, so they hire a consultant or somebody to put out this ad. So I know exactly the article you're talking about, and it's a Baton Rouge-based writer, a journalist, that wrote the article. But on a daily, we communicate with Wall Street. We communicate with very sophisticated financial institutions that measure our revenue, that measure our books. And I'd just like to say, you know, I get it sometimes it's entertaining, but I do want you to know, like, that's very harmful to our community to reiterate and spew things that a journalist out of Baton Rouge would say about the city of Shreveport. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wayne.
Thank you. Billy Roy Wayne, 6144 Farragien Court, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71129, President of the Fairway Forest Neighborhood Association, and also a member of the West Shreveport Alliance. I would like to acknowledge the alliance president, Dr. Nathaniel Manning, and those who are present here today, although I'm not speaking for them, we just happen to be here. The unanimous decision of this council to approve Chief Ben Raymond spoke volumes about this council. It is the desire of many that similar unanimous votes be cast to improve and eliminate blighted properties in this city. One of the greatest crimes in this and any city is property blight. We would not need as much law enforcement monies and funds, perhaps if we just cleared some of the blight property. The second thing, I am to understand that I wanted to speak on the liquor deal, but you said that has to wait? I have a comment about it.
Yeah, you're here, sir. Please make your comment.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bernard Woods is a well-known and respected businessman in our community. It would be a travesty not to approve his request for business growth. We must be careful not to send messages of hypocrisy to our business persons. This does not apply to this council, but in the past, I have seen councils who have played the role of hypocrisy. And as we have been told growing up in the country, the only thing worse than hypocrisy is narrow-minded hypocrisy. Finally, the economic development void in West Shreveport and West Caddo must be addressed if this city is to become the kind of city which attracts high-end businesses. This kind of high-end development is long overdue. Much more will be said about this later, but we ask that you consider that as you move forward in your budget process. Thank you.
Mr. Gary Henick or Henin? Mr. John Miles?
Hi, my name is John Miles, 1332 Madison Avenue, Shreveport. And I came to address some community issues in our community. You know, we don't have no representative in our black community with our, our streets are torn up. On Hearn Avenue, it's terrible. All the great thoroughfares in the black community, all those roads is really undrivable. And we don't have anybody to, to make repairs come full of wishing. Even the lights on Hearn Avenue is out. You know, I notice I see a lot of black people, and I see the white people come up here, you know, and y'all congratulate them on everything, you know, but I don't hear anything about black folks' issues, you know, as far as real economic development for the black community with us owning businesses. You know, the black children coming out of school, they need to get into owning businesses in the black community. You know, we got a lot of Arabs owning everything, and we've been in this city for hundreds of years, and we don't own nothing. And, and I tried to get some property downtown, and I paid my $200 to get it. And they wrote me a letter about six months later, and said they had a meeting, and they weren't going to let me get it. And they sent me my $300 check and a letter stating that. And I really wanted that property, because I wanted to somehow build a school for black people where they could be taught their true history, and they could be taught construction, construction work, and just a lot of skill sets. As you all said, y'all had deficiencies in y'all capital projects, and that could be blacks knowing how to lay concrete with all these deficient work performances that they've been doing throughout Shreveport. The black people can have those jobs and fill those holes with concrete in a timely manner. You know, y'all, all black represent Shreveport, but you all are not. You know, y'all just representing white people. Y'all ain't did nothing to help black folks in a tangible way. You know, I mean, I don't, I mean, I haven't heard a lot of people talk about Sambo's, you know, black Sambo's and everything. And, and I see a lot of them right in this building. And y'all need to stand up and be men and women, black women, and y'all need to start taking care of y'all own people for a change.
Mr. Chairman, the speaker's time has expired.
Well, that's good. I didn't say it all I had to say.
Mr. Chairman, those are all the requests to speak, other than those concerning the liquor store application. Okay.
We have the following.
Confirmation, Nick.
We have the following executive appointment to be considered. That's Mr. Jarvis. Did I see him, Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, he was back there, right here, I believe. Mr. Chairman, can I make that?
Please, Councilman Flur.
May I make that motion to?
If you make the motion, I second.
Mr. Morgan, we are very fortunate in having him come back home to lead us over in the Street Department. He's very capable. Mayor, I congratulate you on making this appointment. And, Mr. Morgan, we know there's going to be great things for you ahead, and we wish you nothing but the best, and it is my motion now to confirm you.
Thank you, sir.
And I second that, and this is for the Assistant to the Superintendent of Streets and Drainage, for those who didn't know. It's been a motion by Councilman Flur and a second by the Chair. If there's no other discussion, please vote. And that motion carried with seven. Congratulations, sir. I also want to know if this is a time that we can suspend the rule? Or to add, I want to add something to the agenda, so Mr. Thompson, if you would.
Is that the adding of the confirmation of the mayor's removal of Mr. James Parnell from the Caddo Booz Report Commission? Is that, what do you want to add?
Yes.
In order to do that, a motion to add that to the agenda would be in order.
Motion, second. Been motioned by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Butcher to add.
Question.
Councilman Bruff.
Mr. Chairman, from my understanding that Ms. Parnell wanted to resign. I mean, that was, that was the gist of the email that Mr.? Mr.?
Settle?
Settle read. I mean, do we not want to give him that opportunity, or was it just?
No, he still can, he still has to support, I mean, send his letter in, if I'm not mistaken. Am I correct on that? He still has to send his letter in.
What? I mean, if we vote to suspend rules, and the next order would be to vote to remove versus accept resignation, is that, is that, and resignation not in order, is that right, Mayor?
Do you have any clarity on this question, on that particular question?
I think it just depends on what the council wants to do and what the mayor recommends on this. You can either wait and get his resignation, or we can put it on for the next meeting, or you can take it up at this time.
Is it, you, Councilman, you know, Mr. Parnell, is it, you think it's material to him how, how we go about this?
That was the understanding that Mr. Settle expressed to me that he would, he would resign versus having action taken to remove him from the, from the, from the Port Board. As Mr. Settle, can you step for a second? And you spoke personally with Mr. Parnell, is that correct?
Yes, I called James this morning and talked to him about it, and he was in the road, traveling, and so he couldn't stop and send a written letter, letter of resignation. He sent this text to me. I did not want to share the mayor's.
Mr. Settle, the question is, from your understanding and your conversation with Mr. Parnell, did he prefer to resign versus be removed from the port?
He wants to resign, he has resigned. He told me that the text was a resignation. He did not want to have, you'd have to face that decision or have that quote mark against him. He has resigned. He did not have the opportunity to email or fax in a letter of resignation. He sent me a text that I read to you and asked me to forward it to the mayor. I didn't feel comfortable giving him the mayor's text number. So I'm confident, James and I go back, I've talked to him three times about it, and made sure that that's what he wanted. If you want me to call him right now, I can't.
I mean, I mean, the order that we are trying to maintain is, is that?
To have his seat empty, I understand.
No, 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 does the text message serve as an official resignation?
Councilman, and I can answer that question, it does not. According to the ordinance, it doesn't. And the board members have, they've emailed, some members of the board have emailed us and said, "This has been done before," where he put forth the resignation and actually didn't follow through with it.
Right.
So it's you all's vote on how we want to go about it?
Mr. Chairman?
If we kick the?
If that's the case, if he's played this game before, I don't want to be facilitating that. So, I mean, I.
Yeah, and I can't verify that. I don't know if there's any way that, or maybe we can research it, but, like I said, it's your votes on how we go about it. If we want to wait until the next council meeting to see if he'll submit prior to, then we can do that, or we can take the matter up today.
Councilman Nelson. Mr. Chairman, if I may make this suggestion, apparently Mr. Settle has the ability to communicate with Mr. Parnell. We're going to be here, you can call him, you said.
I can call him, but y'all need, the seat needs to be empty today.
But let me, let me say this, we're going to be here for the next two hours or more. I would think that a written resignation directed to the mayor's email would be sufficient.
I'll do my best.
And if he can get that done before the conclusion of our. And if, if he can get that done before the conclusion of our meeting, we can accept his resignation, and that'll be the end of it. If he can't, we can suspend the rules at the end of the meeting and move forward. That's my suggestion.
Good, I, I want to be off the hook, so I'll, I'll try to get that done, if, if that's agreeable.
Councilman Bradford?
I, I would accept the, the compromise that will take us up later. But again, uh, I want to give Mr. Parnell an opportunity to resign versus take the action that we are about to take. So, I would not be voting to suspend the rules anyway. So, we, at the end of the meeting, if Mr. Settle could obtain through the, through the electronic means, the, the letter, then, then we'll move forward. Now, I, I was gonna suspend the rules if, if Mr. Parnell had not called for his, his desire to resign. So, so let's, we got a while, if, if Mr. Settle can make that happen, then we, we'll be in good shape, okay?
I'm starting now.
That's Perkins, uh, Shreveport, LA.
All right. So we'll take that off the table. Period? No, no, add it right now. Then we'll come back to it. Mr. Thompson, let's, uh, continue with consent items to be adopted.
Uh, we have one item on the consent agenda. It authorizes 1240 Leonard Road to make a connection to the City of Shreveport Water and Sewer System.
So moved.
Second?
And move back.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman?
Real quick question. Ms. Featherston, is, is she out there, or?
She's on that side. There she is.
Just, just real quick, I'm not gonna take up too much time. Um, have you gotten that list that Councilman Nicholson asked for, as far, are y'all working on that?
Yeah, we have that list, and I'm gonna forward it to you guys.
Okay.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Is it a list that you can share?
Oh, I, I, I shared it last, last council meeting. It's, it's basically, we want to see how many, uh, how many city water users that we have that actually are outside the city.
Oh, okay.
I think we discussed that before. So, we want to know how many are actually paying double the rate.
I get it.
Because this is outside the city.
I get it, okay.
So moved, on this.
Motion carries with seven.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we're now under resolutions on second reading and final passage. Uh, Resolution 120 authorizes the mayor to accept a donation in the amount of $150,000 from American Electric Power, uh, SWEPCO to be utilized by Sportran for the purchase of overhead fast-changing stations for the electric bus.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford.
Councilman Green.
Councilman Green?
Yes.
Second by Councilman Bradford?
Councilman Butcher. That'd be quick.
Been motioned by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Butcher. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Uh, Resolution 121 authorizes the mayor to accept an assistance to firefighters' grant in the amount of $52,181.81 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Homeland Security.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by the Chair. If there's no discussion, please vote, on 121. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Resolution 122 authorizes the acceptance of $500,000 National Park Service African American Civil Rights Preservation Grant through the United States Department of Interior to authorize the mayor to execute all documents associated with the-
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. Councilman Green. That motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Resolution 125, uh, is a resolution for the certification of compliance with the State of Louisiana Off-System Bridge Replacement Program.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Flur and second by Councilman Green. On 123, if there's no discussion, please vote.
125.
It was 125.
My opinion, it's, uh, 125. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
We have one resolution to be introduced. It's Resolution 126. It approves the 2020 Downtown Development Authority Program of Work.
Move for introduction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we're now under introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to October the 22nd. Ordinance 135 amends the City of Shreveport's general fund budget. Uh, Ordinance 136 amends the 2019 budget for the MPC Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance 137 amends the 2019 General Fund Budget for Fire. Uh, Ordinance 138 amends Chapter 38 Housing and Property Standards of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances. Ordinance 139 establishes a new Chapter 38.5 Procedures for Abatement of the City of Shreveport Louisiana Code of Ordinances. Uh, those are all of the, which, uh, we'd like for you to take those up at this time.
Move for introduction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we're now under, uh, budget ordinances to be, um, introduced. Ordinance 140 adopts the 2020 Capital, uh, Projects Fund Budget. Ordinance 141 adopts the 2020 Riverfront Development Fund Budget. Ordinance 142 adopts the 2020 General Fund Budget. Ordinance 143 adopts the 2020 Revenue Retained Risk Fund Budget. Ordinance, uh, 144 adopts the 2020 Metropolitan Planning Commission Fund Budget. Ordinance 145 adopts the 2020 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 146 adopts the 2020 Grant Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 147 adopts the 2020 Shreveport Redevelopment Agency Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 148 adopts the 2020 Downtown Entertainment Economic Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 149 adopts the 2020 Golf Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 150 adopts the 2020 Airport, uh, Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 151 adopts the 2020 Water and Sewer Fund Budget. Ordinance 152 adopts the 2020 Budget Funding, uh, Contractual Services for Sportran, by Sportran. Ordinance 153 adopts the 2020 Downtown Parking Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 154 adopts the 2020 Convention Center Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 155 adopts the 2020 Convention Center Hotel Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 156 adopts the 2020 Debt Service Fund Budget. Ordinance 157 adopts the 2020 Solid Waste Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 158 adopts the 2020 Streets Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 159 adopts the 2020 Downtown Development Authority Budget. So a motion and a second to adopt-
So moved.
To introduce these would be in order. Mr. Chairman, you may also want to entertain a motion to table these ordinances.
Men that are tabled.
I'd like to amend those to table those, um-
Adopt and table.
No, they're introduced, they've already been introduced. So a motion to table would be in order.
Second.
Motion to table, then motion by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Butcher. If there's no discussion on that, please vote. Councilman Flur? Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Uh, we're now under ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance 123 authorizes the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor lease agreement.
I move that we would, um, postpone this one until the next meeting, which we do for a second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Bradford and second by the vice chair to postpone. Send to the next meeting?
To the next meeting.
If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven, postpone.
Ordinance 127 amends the City of Shreveport's 2019 Budget for Streets Special Revenue Fund.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Green, second by the Chair. No discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 128 amends the 2019 Capital Improvement Budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Bradford. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 129 amends the 2019 Community Development Special Revenue Fund.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Bradford. No discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 130 amends various articles and sections of the Unified Development Code.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by the Chair on 130. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 131 amends the MPC's fee schedule for the city's Unified Development Code, uh, relative to fees for wireless telecommunications and facade review.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by the Chair. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Uh, Ordinance 132, uh, concerns case number 19-344-C. It rezones property located on the north side of West Bird Coons Industrial Loop, approximately 150 feet east of Southwood Drive from C4 Heavy Commercial District to C4 Heavy Commercial District with small planned unit development.
It's been moved by Councilman Flur and second by Councilman Butcher. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 133 concerns case number 19-386-C. It rezones property located between Jennings Street and Wood, uh, Woodrow Street, approximately 310 feet west of Sanford Avenue from R2 Multifamily Residential District to IC Industrial Campus District.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fuller and second by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 134 concerns case number 19-391-C. It would rezon property located west of Lake Shore Drive, approximately 380 feet south of Dill League Drive from N A Natural Areas District to R17 Single Family Residential District.
It's been moved by the Chair and second by Councilman Butcher. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, those are all of the items that we have on the regular agenda. There is no, uh, there are no items on the table agenda. We're now under appeals. Uh, the first appeal that's on your agenda is MPC case number 19-301. WFC appealed by Alvin C. Meister III from the decision of the MPC to approve the application for the proposed wireless telecommunications facility at 8100 Joprun Drive. Uh, this will not be decided, or cannot be taken up until the next meeting. However, uh, there were a couple of items that, uh, I hope that the council would consider. Uh, one of the questions that we've been asked is, how will the county, the council conduct that hearing? Uh, will each side be allowed or expected to present their position again? Will extra time be given to the presenters? Uh, any guidance that you can give us so that we can give to them would be helpful at this time.
Okay. Your way, Councilman Nicholson, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, my suggestion is that we encourage the applicant and the appellate to submit whatever additional comments they have in writing. We've heard from them once, we, we extended additional time during a previous meeting. I don't know that additional oral argument would be beneficial. And, and so unless there's objection from any other member of the council, that's my suggestion regarding that question.
I agree with that.
That is, under regular Louisiana law, they could have three minutes, uh, but there would be no extra time given.
No additional time.
No additional time. Okay. Uh, another question, uh, for the council is, would it be helpful to get a report from CMS, the city's consultant, to assist the council in making a decision? Says neither the MPC nor the city have experts on wireless communications towers or their functions. Uh, this report, if you agree to do it, will cost approximately $750.
And, Mr. Chairman, my suggestion is that we authorize that expense, because I, I don't know how we can make a decision in this appeal without some expert guidance.
I think everyone's gonna agree on that.
I agree with that, I agree.
So if there are no objections to that, we will, uh, proceed, we'll ask MPC to proceed to get that report.
Would that, would that be an oral argument by their consultant?
No, it would be a written report.
It'd be a written opinion?
Uh, this will not have him here. It will simply be a report that he will give us, and you will have the written report, but he will not be present.
Will, will there be a recommendation?
Not from, not from that agency, it would cost-
It'd just be information?
Yeah, it would cost-
Addition, okay. Well, I, I'm, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. Uh, the next is an appeal received from Arcadian, Arcadian Ambulance Services concerning whether or not additional services are needed in the city, and whether they can, uh, get a permit or a license to operate a Class A non-emergency ambulance service in the city.
Okay. Uh, did anyone receive the, the letter that I sent today? Okay, just wanted to make sure we did receive the letter on that. I will, um, I'll ask the applicant to withdraw at this time, and just see if we can come back.
I'm sorry, so again, Mr. Chairman?
I will ask the applicant to withdraw his, his application at this time, and see if we could come back, uh, and discuss it at a future date.
No, it's fine, I'm, I'm, I mean-
Has the applicant withdrawn, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, at this time, yes.
Uh, so the, this application is withdrawn, and therefore hearing will not be necessary, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay. Uh, I don't know if anybody was here, Valentine, anybody?
Yes, it is.
And if they have any comments or anything.
Members of the council, I'm Cliff LaBord, uh, with the law firm Wiener Weis in Madison here in town, appearing on behalf of Valentine Ambulance Service. So, um, just for purposes, we are making a record here today. Uh, an appeal was filed, and this is the hearing on that appeal. So, in order to make the record clear, are we to understand that the appeal has been formally withdrawn? And so the application, there is no reason for an appeal at this point?
That's exactly what was said, yes, sir.
So, effectively, the application is denied?
At this particular time, yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Uh, I think it's fair to say we're not, they could make a new application, but that application is denied. Do you agree?
Very good. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the next appeal is for case number C-102-17. It was remanded to the City Council by the District Court to take action on the appeal of MPC decision of November the 1st, 2017. Uh, it concerns, uh, an application to open a liquor store on King's Highway.
Okay, and right before we do that, I, Mr. Settle had some, a word back from, I just want to take that up so we can move forward.
Thank you, John Settle, again. It's an old saying that no good deed goes unpunished, and, um, I talked to James again, and, um, it was not a pleasant conversation. He, he wants, uh, you to vote, and I apologize for delaying you an inconvenience. I, I thought that this would expedite things, but he wants a vote, and that's all I can say. And I apologize for any delay or inconvenience. Thank you for trying.
So, Mr. Chairman, with that in mind, I, I'd like to move that we suspend the rules and, uh, take up, uh-
Was it added to the, did you add it? I need to add it to the, yeah, I need to suspend to add.
Suspend the rules at, at the, at the mayor's recommendation that, uh, Mr. Parnell be removed from the port.
We, we need to, I think the motion needs to be clear, it's to-
Suspend the rules.
No, to add the mayor's, uh, to, to add the confirmation of the mayor's removal of Mr. James Parnell from the Caddo Boes Report Commission. That's to add it to the agenda, there needs to be a motion and a second.
I move what Art just said. It was motioned by Councilman Bradford and second by the Chair. Motion by Councilman Bradford and seconded by the Chair.
Okay.
No, please vote.
Is, is public comment required before we do this to add, add it to the agenda?
That, you're correct.
Yes, I mean, I want to make sure we do this right. Give it a nutshell, okay.
Is there anyone here to, to speak for or against adding this to the agenda?
Yes. I'm not sure everybody understood.
No, is there anyone here who want to speak for or against adding this to the agenda? Seeing none? Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Now motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
To take it up.
It's been moved by Councilman Butcher and seconded by Councilman Green to take the matter of James Penel. Please vote. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Now motion to confirm the mayor's, uh, removal of Mr. James Penel from the Cat-O-Bosch Report Commission.
It's been moved by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Butcher. There's no discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I need to just make, make, make myself clear on this. Let me first be transparent and say Mr. Penel is a person friend of mine. Uh, we worked together throughout the community in different endeavors. Mr. Penel has served on the port, I know, for at least twelve, twelve years. He was reappointed two years ago by Mayor Tyler. Up to this point, I have never heard, uh, the executive director of the port nor any board members, uh, bring any, um, negative conversation regarding Mr. Penel's performance. And, and yet we, through the mayor's office, received a letter asking from the majority of the port members asking that Mr. Penel be removed because Mr. Penel's presence there is causing some unpleasant, uh, um, climate or environment. Now, uh, my concern with that is simply that, uh, I don't know, they didn't detail the, the degree of his, of his, of his being ruled on, on cooperating. I don't know what that was about, but, but to, but, but for members to send a letter to, to the mayor or to this body expressing their displeasure with a member of a board that this body has confirmed, uh, even though it's in the privy of the mayor and this council, it sets me a bad example that if, if majority of the people that we confirm go onto a committee or board and the majority of those people don't like them, they can, they can send a letter and say, you know, we don't like him, move him off the board. That, that, that doesn't sit well. But I, but they did, they did and I just want to say that I don't agree with it, but, but it's before us and I'm prepared to vote.
Please vote. Motion carries with six.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, we are back on the appeal, um, concerning the liquor store on King's Highway. The MPC's decision, uh, was to approve the application subject to certain stipulations and I believe that there were six of them. Uh, it went to court, uh, and the court has remanded it back to the council to determine whether or not it agrees with the MPC's decision in this regard. And I think that there are a number of people who want to speak for or against this matter.
They are.
Would you recite the stipulations, Mr. Thompson?
The stipulations.
With which the MPC approved the application?
Uh, there was a limitation on the hours of operation to the applicants. Uh, the time was from eight AM to twelve midnight. Uh, there was a provision of a revised site plan indicating, number one, closure of the westernmost driveway. Number two, extension of the sidewalk and landscaping shrubbery from Gilbert Drive across the former driveway and in the unmaintained area next to the eastern driveway. Number three, uh, irrigation of all landscaping on the site. Four, repair of the deteriorated sections of all fencing at the site. Number five, provision of a monument sign if new signage is proposed at the, at a later date. And number six, assurance that the dumpster enclosure is maintained and in proper working order.
This is the ordinance. All right.
Mr. Chairman, my intention is to first call the applicant, uh, and then to call those opposed to the permit and then to let the lawyers for both parties speak last. And with, with that explanation, I'll first call Mr. Woods.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me.
Will each person, uh, have three minutes?
Uh, yes, each person speaking. Excuse me. No, no, yes, fine. Each, each person will have three minutes today to speak.
Is that fine, the order that we're going in, Mr. Woods comes up first? Is that fine what you said?
Okay. Well, then, Mr. Woods will go last.
Mr. Ed Crawford.
And, Mr. Crawford, if you and all other speakers would please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Edward Crawford. I live at three three two one Centenary Boulevard. And first I would like to ask everyone who's in opposition, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to, to rise to state their presence, even those who may not have time to speak. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate y'all giving us the time to speak on this issue. Uh, I will try to be within my three minutes to, uh, honor your time. There are plenty of other people that wish to speak as well. Uh, again, my name is Ed Crawford. I've been living in this place my whole life. I've been on Centenary Boulevard or Gladstone for close to seventy years now, I'm afraid to admit. My mother lived there for most of her life. My grandparents before her lived in the same area. My mother and father both went to Bird High School. My mother went to Crustwell just like I did and my sister did, so we're lifelong members of that community. The thing that brings us here, I think, is a unfortunate situation with, with rulings and MPC rules and this and that. And, uh, we believe that the, the zoning for this area should be for residences and not for liquor stores. We have wine and beer already, as you know. Uh, liquor stores are prohibited under the current zoning laws. Uh, there's a special exception granted for this. We don't know why that happened, but it did. Uh, when Don Seafood experienced the same event some years ago, the sea council reversed that order because they got pushed back from the neighbors. I represent to you that we're, you're going to get the same pushback for this. Uh, we have done a terrific amount of research in the area and we are very concerned with many elements. The first is just simply neighborhood safety. All the research that we have turned up in this file is full of it and we've got more that we have submitted to you, is that the presence of, of hard alcohol outlets in the midst of a residential neighborhood has negative effects on that neighborhood. The, the research is universal. It's just a matter of how bad. It's either a little bit bad or very, very bad. Uh, the crime element increases. We've had shootings down there already before on the same site that we're speaking of today, where there's an armed robbery attempt. This is when there's still a Circle K there with only beer and wine. Okay? Armed robbery, two people shot, one killed, not that long ago. Uh, so the crime, the, the question of crime is not in dispute. No one can honestly dispute that the presence of this kind of operation, honestly run though it may be, is, uh, anything but detrimental to a residential neighborhood. That's why they're not zoned for this. Another element that we need to speak about is, uh, is property values. I realize the city has difficulty with its finances. Our community has been spending years and hundreds of thousands of dollars rehabbing old properties in the area. You will hear from other members shortly of our neighborhood who have spent most of their careers building up the neighborhood. Many, many of our young people are moving to this area with small children. Uh, they are fixing up their houses. Uh, we are buying older houses that are rundown, old apartments, and we're, we're adding money to them and fixing them up and reletting them. There are five apartments facing King's Highway.
Your time has expired, but I want to, I want to ask you a question.
Sure.
What impact do you think approving this liquor store will have on future investment in this community?
It will be neg, it already has been negative. Uh, Matthew Lynn, who I hope is still here, uh, will be able to tell you, your letter speaks to it. He had a property for sale at the end of King's Highway in our neighborhood and he was about to close on the sale. And when they found out there was a liquor store pending, not in place, but pending, they canceled the sale immediately. No one is going to move into this area for any purpose until this issue is resolved. And if it is resolved in favor of a liquor store, that's taking all kinds of people off the board. I mean, we've already, that's actual, an actual event that he can tell you to and it's in your, it's in your materials.
I'll, I'll say that I, uh, I drive by this intersection every day on my way to Cat-O-Magnet High School, dropping off my daughter who doesn't quite have her driver's license. And I, I think that this proposed liquor store location is immediately adjacent to a home. Is that right?
Across the back fence.
Doesn't it back up to a, somebody's house?
Correct. All the other residents, all the other structures on the block are homes. Right. So, any other questions from anybody? I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Butcher.
Mr. Crawford, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I guess one, one question I have is, and this is one question I've been asked, and I, I like Councilman Nicholson and by there pretty much every day, so I'm, I'm familiar with the area very well. It's nice for me to see a neighborhood get together for one cause. You know, we talk about Shreveport is, is, is dying and that we, we don't have pride, but it's good to see people with pride in their neighborhood regardless on which side they are. So, so I commend you for that. Having said that, are there any, since y'all have rallied for this, is there any ideas of possibly the neighborhood getting together to make, uh, other type of development in that area? Because I, for one, hate to see a vacant building. I think it's, it's pretty bad. I mean, is there, is there any talk of the neighborhood maybe putting in other things there? There's a vacant lot right next to it, vacant building, you have Don's. Are y'all talking about things like that?
Yes, we have been. It's very difficult. As I said before, with the, the pending liquor store, it kind of takes everything off the table for now. We have considered making an offer on the property, but we've been unsuccessful in negotiating a price because a liquor store is going to bring the biggest price. Okay, quite frankly? But we're very interested in that and you will hear later in later testimony, I mean, we're talking about dozens and dozens of units of residential properties rehabilitated and we want to move towards the commercial part, but our focus has been on building a, a strong neighborhood. Because neighborhoods are what are going to make this, this town work. And we've done, I think, an excellent job of doing that. We've got young families moving into our area. Some are even coming from Benton. Okay? So people are coming to our area to live with, with young, with young children and we just don't want them exposed to any negative outcomes. We got, we had the president of, uh, Centenary came yesterday and spoke to y'all. We have the principal at Bird High School coming to speak to y'all. So, you know, we're making steady progress, but we've got to be able to avoid things that go backwards and, and set everything back that we've done for twenty years.
And I agree, being in real estate for twenty years in this market, I, I understand the values and I, I think that you have to have a, um, neighborhood that can support businesses, so I think you're taking it step by step, so.
Got to have the people there.
Right.
And they're, they're coming and they're, they're getting there, so we're, we're achieving that.
Well, that's, that's one question that I've been asked via email from a few people is, you know, why, why, if this group doesn't, uh, doesn't want the liquor store there, why, why are they not doing anything with it? And, and I think from what you've just said, that there are plans to, to develop commercially in that, in that corridor.
Well, there are, but again, with a liquor store, many of those plans won't happen because we've already seen one specific example where a company that was coming from New Orleans to put a little eatery down at that end of the street, the old Ca, uh, Columbia Cafe, just walked away. They just said, we can't, our, our stats do not allow us to, to go there. HUD, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, all the federal agencies that support housing, put a big black check mark against anything close to a liquor store because it destabilizes their, their, their base. So there's, there's tons of evidence which I, I'll, y'all, y'all have now to, to look at, but we have specific examples right, right on that block.
That's called redlining. I wonder what came first, the red line or the liquor store?
I don't know. I really don't. But this is, this is federal. I mean, this is not state, this is HUD. Okay? Federal Housing Authorities.
Red lines for federal too?
I'm sorry?
Red lines for federal too?
Well, that may be. I'm just telling you that everybody stops when there's a liquor store to wait and see what's going to happen.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I appreciate it, Mr. Crawford, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Chair.
Councilman Green?
Yes, how, how long, um, how long has that building been vacant?
As I recall, um, it was the, the Circle K moved across the street in about nineteen, I mean, two thousand seventeen, maybe sixteen, because seventeen was when this dispute began. Two thousand seventeen was when, uh, we were here before you the last time and it's been vacant, of course, since then because it's been pending, uh, court action.
So once Circle K, am I understanding, once Circle K moved, then the neighborhood, are you saying they made an effort to get that building?
Well, we, we've been trying off and on for years, but that happened very quickly and then the, the liquor store application came in very quickly behind that.
When you say quickly?
I'd have to go back and check the record. I don't know exactly how long it took. Remember, we're all.
No, what I'm saying, you said it happened quickly, what's?
Well, my, my memory was that when the Circle K on the south side of King's Highway moved to the north side of King's Highway, it took them quite a while to clean up the property. They had tanks there they had to dig out, because I remember driving by there, some of y'all may remember too. It took them quite a while to abate the property. And so that was, that took probably six months to a year, maybe longer. You know, and they did the same thing on, um, Centenary and Olive, abating the property to, to back where it could be used again.
So as soon as that happened, the neighborhood contacted you?
Uh, no, I'm, um, the neighborhood didn't contact me. I'm just saying that it's, what happened was we found out about the liquor store application through the MPC when they sent out the, uh, notification. That's when all this started. I think it was in two thousand seventeen is when that process began. I think the last time we were here was in November of seventeen.
That's correct.
Does that sound roughly correct?
That's correct. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Bradford, I don't know if that was seventeen or sixteen and then seventeen.
Well, I mean, it, it became vacant in sixteen.
Right. Okay. Councilman Bradford.
Scruff, thank you for coming. What, from where this location is, where's the closest liquor store to this location? Do you have an idea?
Uh, Yuri Drive, probably, Highway one, uh, Thrifty there.
In that area?
That's probably the closest one, yes. There's another one, I think, further down on, uh, Shreveport Barstool Highway. I'm not familiar with that one, but I've, in our research and in the material we sent you, we mentioned, uh, those other sides.
You mentioned that, uh, a liquor store in neighborhoods has a, um, negative diverse effect on neighborhoods. Is that, is, you have scientific research to, to prove that or, or you just, that's your opinion?
No, that's not my opinion. We have, uh, a lot of data. Johns Hopkins University has done a good, many studies on this. Um, there, we have, we provided in some of our materials to you some of the references and I have them in my handout here as well to the studies that support these, these activities. And again, that's a, the Thrifty on, uh, Yuri is a much different deal. That's a state highway. It's also Highway one, a different zoning area. It's all vehicular, they have a drive-through and it, it kind of faces out and it's almost always driving, but it's also a different zoning area because of the state highway being there.
What if I tell you that, uh, in my previous council, my four years on that council, uh, that, that council, uh, in spite of the same outcry from the neighborhood, that on two occasions, that, that the council, uh, voted to place a liquor store in, in, in those neighborhoods?
You mean over the objections of the neighborhood?
Yes.
And the neighborhood's representatives?
Yes.
Well, I would say that that was a terrible mistake. And I will say this further. We, this research we've got here and more besides, we've discovered that there are cities in this country, Baltimore is a great example, that are deciding to go back and change certain zoning areas that permit too many liquor stores next to neighborhoods. And I can tell you for one, our whole neighborhood association, I give you my word, we will fight for any neighborhood that wants to resist this or push it backwards because it's killing a lot of our neighborhoods already and it's not the right thing to do. And we would be supportive of you, this council and the mayor and the MPC getting together and say, okay, what's good for our neighborhoods? Let's take, let's start from scratch and say what supports and allows neighborhoods to flourish. Let's get this away from the children. We've got three schools within a few hundred yards of this. I mean, that's not good and it's not good anywhere it occurs, not just with us. I mean, that's not good, and it's not good anywhere it occurs, not just with us.
Now, let me ask you one other question. Now, that location for over 25 years, and when it relocated across the street, they serve beverages.
Beer and wine. Our area is zoned for beer and wine, yes. I wish it weren't, but it is. That's part of the, that's already set.
And a liquor store is restricted to selling only to 21 years old and up?
I think that's, I think that's correct.
And I mean, wouldn't that serve as a barrier to undesirable manners?
Well, Mr. Bradford, I don't know where you went to high school. I went to Bird. And I'm serious now, okay? It sounds kind of funny, but I'm serious. When, all you got to do is find one older person to help you out, and you, you know, they'll buy it and give it to you. That happened with beer drinking in my time, and I was in high school in the 60s and '70s. So, you know, the trouble is, even the beer is a problem, to be honest with you. We had a killing in that very spot about, before the Circle K moved away and went across the street. We had a terrible event, and we'll hear more about that, too, because the Centenary officers were the first on the scene when that happened. So, quite frankly, I would support you and anybody else on this commission that wanted to push back the alcohol limits away from neighborhoods, put them in the commercial zones where they can't do any harm to children. Okay? We've got Crestwell School right there. We've got little children walking around here. So, I'm supportive of that. If anything happened in the past that shouldn't have, I apologize, and I'm sorry. I wasn't voting on that. But I have friends of mine, Mr. Arshino doesn't mind my saying this, he's probably gone, I guess I can say it. He said that when he was on the board, he voted against alcohol in the wrong neighborhoods unless supported by the councilman from that area.
Well, I just mentioned that. That did not happen, at least during my tenure on my first council, including some other--
Well, I think he may have predated you, too, I believe.
But let me, I'm on reserves, because I want to make some comments during the debate from the council members. But I do want to say that my history of promoting better living, better lifestyles in communities started over 30 years ago. I had, in Queensborough in 1991, it was me initiating with other neighbors to form the Queensborough Neighbor Association, which took up causes like you're taking up. And I think one of our causes was the same issue, in that we did not want establishment that we thought was not appropriate to our neighborhood.
Right.
Some of our fear, I would say, was just the fear of itself. I'm not contradicting anything. I support the efforts. This is a democracy. I support the efforts of everybody here today. I really do. But I'm going to make some comments later on on why I'm going to support this initiative. Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, sir. All right, Councilman Green. But don't forget what I told you about. We'll help you if you want to fight it.
Councilman Green?
Sir, did I understand you to say that on a state highway, it's better to have liquor than on a, were you saying it's better to have it on a state highway than on a city highway?
No, I did not say that. I said it's, it's my understanding that it's zoned differently.
No, you said, we were talking about, you said one liquor store was on, was that Yuri? And you said that was a state highway?
Highway One, yes, sir.
Highway One?
Right.
And you said, what did you say? What was your statement?
Well, I simply said that it was, it's my understanding, and I'm not a zoning expert, but I think it's correct to say that it's a different zoning than other areas like, I mean, it's a, the highway presence makes it a different kind of animal than a neighborhood area.
So, were you saying that this was on, if this particular situation was on Highway One, you would be in support of it?
Not necessarily. I'm just saying that's the way the zoning laws were, that allow it.
Okay.
It's kind of like, in our area, beer and wine are allowed. Hard liquor is not. The MPC had to make a special exception to open up the possibility of a hard liquor outlet there. And that's one of the confusions I think a lot of people have, even on the, maybe even with the MPC, is that beer and wine are classified differently than alcohol, hard alcohol. And that's just a distinction I think a lot of people have missed over time, and if, you know, if there's beer and wine, then why can't we have alcohol? But they're zoned differently.
So, are you familiar with Old English?
With Old English?
Yeah, beer.
A little bit, but I've really spent more time with Renaissance English, to be honest with you, but I really, it's hard to read that, it really is.
But I'm just saying, have you ever heard of Old English?
Yes, sir. Anglo-Saxon.
It's a beer as well.
I must have missed that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm a great laugh guy.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm happy to answer them.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Okay, thank you.
Amy Bookenfor.
My name is Amy Bookenfor. I reside at 306 Gladstone Boulevard. Building on the historic nature of our neighborhood, our house was built in 1928. I am standing here today to express my opposition to the proposed liquor store at the corner of Gilbert and Kings. Just two years ago, right when this first issue was occurring, we moved back home from the safety net town of Benton. We made a conscious decision to invest and contribute to the revitalization of this beautiful neighborhood. This being said, I would like to voice our concerns over the establishment of a liquor store at the corner of Gilbert and Kings. I stress revitalization, as it statistically has shown, liquor stores and convenience stores of such lead to increased crime and traffic. This type of establishment will not benefit this area. We already have a convenience store, the Circle K, directly across the street, which, by the way, I don't understand how the MPC allowed them to shut down one building, move across the street, and open a new one, and leave one vacant. But they did. They sell beer and wine. In addition, there's Brookshire's Grocery Store a block over, and there's another third establishment on Yuri Drive within a walking distance. We, as a family, truly enjoy living in this beautiful and vibrant neighborhood, and we welcome new businesses. However, the addition of a liquor store will surely disrupt this serene environment. In fact, it will cater to potential loitering, drugs, and increased crime. This form of establishment will not benefit the surrounding area and neighborhoods, yet it will encourage alcohol consumption by those who lack motorized transportation. These are the several, I'm sorry, there are several liquor establishments within a three-mile radius. However, a vehicle or form of transportation would be necessary. This store would simply be catering to foot traffic, and with that could pose safety issues around the high-traffic area of King's Highway. In addition, there's bike lanes right off of Gilbert Drive, where we constantly have people going the wrong direction in the bike lane in a bike. This will increase more traffic, and just something to be aware of. I grew up in Elmeria Estates, and my husband grew up in Patton Avenue. We felt the calling to come back home to Shreveport, so that we could, as a family, experience the cultural environment that is thriving here. We need to continue to nurture this culture with educated decisions on what will grow our city, not create decay. I pray the council hears our and our neighbors' wishes and makes the right decision for our neighborhood. I pray that you, as our councilmen, will hear our concerns and vote in opposition to this issue, and in support of our homeowners, renters, businesses, schools, churches, and families. In addition, I would like to point out that several leaders in the community have recently just spoken out in opposition to this store. The president of Centenary, the principal of C E Bird High School, Mr. Bill Joyce--
Ms. Bookenfor. I can keep time without help.
I have two more sentences.
Look, I'm--
Okay, that's fine.
If it were my decision, I would extend you the time, but our practice is not to do that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Heidi Jerkin.
Heidi Jerkin, G E R K I N, 227 Forest Avenue, Shreveport, 71104. Our neighborhood, Gladstone, is already crime-ridden. I know this because I and my family have been personally victimized. On January 25th, 2018, Sunday afternoon, around 12:30, we were victims of a home invasion. My then 11-year-old, or 10-year-old daughter, Lily, who could not be here today, was the first person in my home to encounter this intruder, who then was removed by my husband and proceeded to turn around and jump through our window and back into our home. My daughter now suffers from PTSD. Allowing a liquor store, where studies have shown over and over again, the studies you have been provided, to come into this neighborhood is like throwing fuel on the fire. I often hear rhetoric in this city. I've heard it from most of the people on this council. I hope it's not just rhetoric. I've heard it from the mayor. I've heard it from our new police chief, that we're going to be tough on crime. How tough are you willing to be? There are more than 40 children that I'm aware of within Gladstone, Madison Park, Waterside, the immediate South Highland and Highland area, who frequently ride bikes and play outside. As I stated in November of 2017, when I spoke with the council, I know some of you weren't on council at that time, our children are not indoors playing on video games like most kids. Our children are outside. They are running, they are riding bikes, and they are enjoying being children. This directly contradicts their ability to do that. There are 20 Cat-O-Parish bus stops less than a mile from this location. Bird students living in this area and Crestwell students walk to school. There are two bus stops, one in the morning and one at night, directly on the corner of Gilbert and Kings Highway. And there are two, including my daughter's bus stop, on the corner of Kings and Wheelis, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. I personally would like to commend Councilman Green for his vigilant fight against what he called rampant crime in District F. I am asking you to take up that same fight in every district, including districts C and B. Fight for all the people of Shreveport to lower crime rates. Voting for a liquor store, when studies have shown over and over again that off-premises consumption of alcohol in stores that only serve the purpose of providing alcohol--
Thank you, Mr. Jerkin.
--increases crime. Thank you.
Patricia Dunn.
Hi, I'm Patricia Dunn with Neil Irwin Law, 415 Texas Street. I wanted to talk to you a minute about the master plan. It seems not to have been considered when this decision was made originally. A few years ago, the city worked with the citizens of Shreveport to develop a roadmap for the city's future. And the city adopted that million-dollar master plan in 2010. And the recurring theme in the master plan is that citizens want their neighborhoods to be revitalized and saved. The future land use chapter of the plan begins with a recommendation for consultation with neighborhoods and property owners in creating zoning and in evaluating potentially high-impact developments. It is important to support the master plan and the neighborhoods by voting against hard liquor in this type of zoning anywhere in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Coach Jerry Badgley.
Coach, I'm one of your less memorable football players from many years ago, so it's good to see you. I won't comment on that, so.
Thank you.
Kind of caught me off guard there. Jerry Badgley, 110 Leo, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71105, and I am also the principal of C E Bird High School. Mr. Chairman and members of the city council and Mr. Mayor, appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'll keep my comments brief. We have heard and will hear a lot of different things. I'm going to speak about a certain group of students at Bird High School. And we have 1,800 students, over 100 staff members. Everybody will be affected by this. But sometimes in high school, we forget about those kids that do not ride a bus, do not have their own transportation, but yet they want the full high school experience. So, they play athletics, they participate in the band, they do drama productions. And when it's over with, as it was last Thursday night after lightning delay, and we're all trying to get them settled and out of the school at almost 11 o'clock at night, without realizing it, dozens upon dozens upon dozens of those students walk home. They live in Highland, they live down Gladstone, Waterside. They walk home. They walk to school. Some of them live within that one-mile radius, and therefore, there are no buses. And so, I think about those kids who are going to leave school after dark, at night, excuse me, and will have to go by this liquor store. There is a temptation. We all laughed earlier about acquiring alcohol. IDs are a dime a dozen. They're made all the time. We encounter them all the time. But there are just as many people standing on a corner that, for $2, will go in in that liquor store and buy them whatever they want. And that is the thing that concerns me the most. And even if they're totally innocent and not wanting to buy anything, being propositioned to go do that, and do you turn that person down for fear of your own life, because they want to make a couple extra bucks and buy something for themselves to drink? So, if for nothing else, for these kids alone, keep this liquor store out of this area and help us keep these kids as safe as we can. We've got enough to deal with. We don't need something else that we've got to worry about at this time of night. Thank you.
Coach, let me, let me ask, ma'am--
Yes, sir.
Help me now understand the scenario that you just painted. Who is your neighbor across the street on the corner of the drugstore?
The new or the old cleaners or the--
Who is your neighbor across the street on the corner?
Okay, Line Avenue, Walgreens. Yes, sir. I'm on a different corner than you.
Well, come on over my--
Okay.
All right, help me out there now. They sell alcohol?
If they do, I've never seen it on their shelf. I don't go over there very often, but--
They sell beer?
I don't know.
Or wine?
I've never bought any there.
Okay, I'm just, I'm asking, I'm asking you if that was a possibility that they sold that.
No, when I say come out of there on a daily basis, or bags of chips--
I remember playing with drugs, they're no longer there, I know, but I was just wondering about that.
Right. No, you have a gas station on the other corner, and Julie Anne's on the other side.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
Okay.
I do want to, I want to ask you a question, Coach.
I'm sorry?
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Coach, we don't, we can't legislate moral character. Let me ask you, how many, how many students of Bird High School do you think will walk home and want to go in the liquor store?
Well, let me put it to you this way. It will be one more liquor store that they will have to walk by, and that's one more temptation. It, I don't argue that if kids want to get alcohol, that there are ways to get it. I understand that. I was a kid once myself. But in this instance, especially at the time of night, that they're going to be exposed to this, it's not just about the alcohol-- to this, it's not just about the alcohol, it's about their safety. And that's my primary concern.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Ms. Monica Lawrence.
I'm Monica Lawrence. I'm the PTSA president at Bird High School. I live at 618 Berlin Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I'm just going to read a letter on behalf of the PTSA. As the PTSA president at C.E. Bird, I would like to express my strong objection to the proposition of a liquor store at 327 Kings Highway. The PTSA advocates daily for the students, staff, and administration at Bird High School, and I would not uphold the mission of my organization if I did not take a stand against this proposition. I am concerned that by allowing this liquor store into our neighborhood, the children who live here, as well as the students of C.E. Bird and Crestwell Elementary, will be adversely affected. Studies show that neighborhoods with higher concentrations of liquor stores also have higher rates of felony assaults, auto thefts, underage drinking, alcohol-related hospitalizations, drunken driving accidents, and pedestrian injuries. A store like this will bring down the quality of the neighborhood through crowds, trash, traffic problems, and contribute to definite quality-of-life issues. The negative effects of liquor stores strike local neighborhoods whether these neighborhoods are poor or rich. Studies show that if people purchase alcohol and consume it close by, they become bold enough to do things they would not ordinarily do. C.E. Bird students walk by this location daily, often at night after activities on campus. When confronted with the facts of what a liquor store can do to a neighborhood, voting yes and putting the safety of these students at risk is highly negligent. With all of the negativity in our city right now, how is a vote for a liquor store in a neighborhood filled with churches, daycare, schools, supporting the community and its most precious asset, our children? I urge you to vote no and protect our students at C.E. Bird and the viability of the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Don Little, welcome from the school board. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Board, thank you for having me. My name is Don Little. I live at 928 Thor Boulevard. I stand in opposition to the location of a liquor store on Kings Highway. As mentioned, I serve on Caddo Parish School Board. I'm a graduate of nearby Centenary College and a South Highlands homeowner. I do want to preemptively address a narrative that stands in the background of this issue. I know that there's a discussion about race, and just to clear the air, I want to say that I live two blocks from two minority-owned businesses, one of which located two or three years ago, Real Barbecue. There was zero neighborhood opposition. They were welcomed with open arms and are, we are proud to have them nearby. I want to eliminate that aspect of this component directly. My reason for opposition to this liquor store on Kings Highway is its proximity to three schools, Crestwell, Bird, and Centenary College. Of those schools, there are crossing guards located within 100 yards and multiple bus stops. There are nearly 2,000 students who are moving within this arena. My position is also because of proximity to homes. There are homes literally on the other side of the fence from this proposed location. There is a proven link to crime and addiction with proximities of liquor stores. There are also proven drops in property values which will impact tax receipts for the city. Additionally, there are more than 1,000 neighbors who have signed a petition in opposition to this being located here. And finally, it violates current zoning laws that are established. Thank you so much for your time.
Welcome, Mr. Joyce. My children are big fans.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you for hearing us today. I'm sorry, my voice is a little... But I'm William Joyce. I live at 3302 Centenary Boulevard, and I've lived there for 30 years. I raised my kids in that neighborhood. And yes, I write and illustrate books for children, and I make movies and television shows for them as well. Children matter a lot to me. All children do. And the idea of this, we've heard all the specifics. We all know that, yes, a liquor store like this isn't good for a neighborhood. It doesn't help. It usually is a negative influence. That's sort of irrefutable. These are two neighborhoods that have struggled, and they've been coming back by the tenacity and hope of long-term and new residents. This isn't going to make that any easier. It's going to make it a lot harder. A lot of progress has been made. Those neighborhoods are making genuine progress. And I hate to see this happen. I hate to see the wheels come off the bus in that progress. And most of all, I hate to see something like this put around thousands of kids, as we've said over and over, thousands of schoolkids. I lived down the street from a liquor store in Baton Rouge when my wife was in law school, and it was challenging. People come and go all day long that are definitely under the influence. Sometimes they're on foot. Even more frightening is than when they're in a car. And, I mean, our cars were broken into, so much we quit locking them. We had peeping toms, we had break-ins, we had everything you can think of. And that's all, you can deal with that as best you can. We don't want to. We would like to avoid having to deal with that. But again, I go back to these people, whatever their intentions are, they want to get a drink in the middle of the day, they want to get a bottle of booze, hard liquor in the middle of the day. And there's always a chance, a pretty good chance, that some of them had a little bit to drink already, and they're going to drink some more on their way. And while they're on their way, they're going to be going through these neighborhoods, these neighborhoods full of kids. And I just think that's a recipe for disaster. I think if this goes through, if this liquor store gets there, we're going to have some very sad stories to tell in the future. And I just don't want that to happen. I've kept my business here for all of my career. I have opportunities now to move, but I have stood very fastly and said, no, I want to keep it here. I'm starting a new animation company. We have deals going with Canadian Animation, where I used to have to go to Canada to have this done because of our...
Mr. Joyce, I'm constrained to tell you that your time has expired. I appreciate your comments very much, and I certainly agree with your sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Chief Eddie Walker.
Good afternoon. My name's Eddie Walker. My residence is 9390 Blom, but I spend most of my time at 2911 Centenary Boulevard. I'm currently the police chief and director of public safety at Centenary College. I've been there since 2004. I sit on the board of the Caddo Parish Crime Stoppers. I also sit on the board of the Domestic Violence Task Force for Caddo and Bossier Parish. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of Centenary College and the parents of the nearly 600 students that reside on our campus. Centenary College has been a good neighbor in the Highland area for over 100 years, and we sit on a little more than 50 acres, and where we house those 600 students, and over 800 people are on our campus at any given time. We don't want to make hard liquor any more accessible than it is to our students, and putting it within walking distance of our campus is not a good idea. Nearly all of the sexual assaults that we respond to, that we've been made aware of, not only involved alcohol, they involved hard liquor. Foot traffic through the campus has slowly decreased over the past few years, slowly because the proactive work of the police officers, quickly responding to and IDing individuals that come onto campus. Having a hard liquor store so close to the campus will increase that foot traffic for those seeking to carry, consume, and consume hard liquor. Not to say that those folks that are consuming hard liquor are bad people, but bad people, I'm sorry, good people under the influence of hard liquor can make bad decisions, and bad people under the influence of hard liquor can do bad things. As Mr. Crawford spoke earlier about the incident, it was October 2nd of 2016 where we responded to a shooting at that same location where a young man lost his life. It was not a good place to show up, you know, for, for police officers, but we stayed there until the Shreveport units arrived. What I want to ask is what's going to come of this? What, what good is going to come out of this? And I don't think there's anything, but I can tell you what's going to expect to come out of it. More DWI deaths, more domestic violence, more sexual assaults, more broken homes. We have nothing against someone having a successful business. We do, however, have a problem with someone bringing something as toxic as hard liquor into our community. Cast your vote today as if this liquor store is being proposed in your district, right in the middle of your neighborhood, and within walking distance of three schools in your district. It should be an easy vote for you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. The Councilman.
Chief Walker, how often do y'all have non-students walking through Centenary property?
2016, we stopped 24 people. 2018, we stopped seven. So it's decreased.
It's decreased.
Yes.
And what's the reasoning for that? Is it because it's a shortcut to get to the Circle K?
It's a shortcut. From different locations, either coming down Alexander or going down East Washington. So if you're going north on Alexander, you cut through. If you're going east and west on East Washington, it's a cut through.
And at Centenary College, is it, it's true that the college requires those students, unless they have a hardship, to live on campus, correct?
That's correct.
So they're there 24 hours a day during school?
Yes, sir.
In some cases, how many times have y'all ID'd somebody that may have a criminal history?
Numerous times. Yearly, like I say, every year we'll come across someone with a criminal history.
Have y'all ever had any violence on campus from non-college people?
Yes, sir.
How long ago was that?
The one that comes to mind is November 20th, 2016, I'm sorry, 2014, where it was a fatal shooting on campus involving the police officers.
Do, does every student at Centenary have a car?
No, sir. The majority have cars. There are a lot that do not have cars, and they walk.
So do you feel, do you feel like the, I guess, the reduced walking time to this hard liquor store, even if the students are of age, could increase consumption on the campus?
I guarantee it. They're, they're consuming alcohol already, and if you think that underage kids do not get alcohol, that's one of our biggest problems that we have. We catch alcohol in the dorms just about every, every semester, every time they do a health and safety inspection, we come across hard alcohol in the rooms. And it's not the students that are 21-years-old, it's the ones that are underage.
You mentioned sexual assault and domestic violence. Of these young students that are mostly under 21-years-old, or I'd say 22 and below, how many, and I know you might not want to give the exact number, but if there is, if there is a sexual assault on campus, how many times has alcohol been involved?
99%. And 99% of those have been freshmen, freshmen and a few sophomores. But it's, it's the national average. That's, that's national statistics prove that, you know, the first year of college is the, the most likely chance of someone being a victim of sexual assault on a college campus.
So Centenary's stance is it's not only external dangers coming from the liquor store, but it also could be internal dangers that are coming from the liquor store?
Exactly. It's the primariness, the key, that, it's a common factor in all of our sexual assaults.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Eddie.
Yes, sir.
May I ask you a few questions? I've known you for, your family for a number of years.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions. I understand where you're coming. I'm a Methodist, and I've already heard from the flock, and I probably beat the flock. But let me just ask you a question. You familiar with Calvary Baptist Church, because I know you're a deacon at that church?
Yes, sir.
Calvary Baptist Church versus Thrifty Liquor. You remember that lawsuit?
Yes, sir.
That went all the way to the Louisiana Supreme Court and was overturned by the higher court, was it not?
If you say so.
Yeah, well, that's what happened. You're familiar with Thrifty Liquor at Walker Road in Burke Coons? You can go and, I did it myself, you can stand in the parking lot and see Southwood High School. And so you know Cuban liquor is there by this barbecue place, this state, and they closed early, I think, but they're, they're there in the neighborhood. You're familiar where Cuban liquor is. My question is, do you know anything about Bernie Wood, that man that's proposing?
I just know what hard, I know the dangers of hard liquor is what I know, and that's what I've dealt with for the last 15 years at Centenary College.
Yes, I understand, and I appreciate your service there to the college. The population of the college has decreased, is it not? Enrollment?
It didn't, when we dropped to Division One, but it has, had a steadily increase since then.
It has increased? Well, that's good news.
It's increased.
It may survive then, right.
This ain't going to help it, though.
Yeah, this, I understand where you're coming from, but the thing about it is, the, the appeal on that case, Calvary Baptist Church versus Thrifty Liquor, they, they went all the way to the Supreme Court. This, this is, were you able to go to the MPC meeting where the decision was 6-3 by the MPC Board? Were you able to make that?
No, sir.
And hear any of the reasoning about why they approved this?
No, sir.
Okay, well, I didn't either, so, anyway, we'll see, and I appreciate you coming today and speaking, Eddie. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Nicholson.
Chief, how long have you been in law enforcement?
I volunteer for the Shreveport Police Department from 1997 to 2004, and I got employed at Centenary College in 2004.
So decades.
Yes, sir.
And in your professional judgment, approving a liquor store at the location we're talking about, it's going to make Centenary College a more dangerous place...
There's no doubt in my mind.
...for students and faculty.
No doubt in my mind.
Is it going to do anything good for Centenary College?
Not one thing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Brafel.
Mr. Johnson, I may need to hold my remarks, but I will ask the Chief while he's in. He just gave us a description of some of the instances that happens at Centenary, alcohol-related. And he was, he was very broad in stating some of those issues, but I just want to say, Chief, that those incidents did not happen because of this proposed establishment. And, and, and we're painting with this, we're painting this thing with a very broad brush. And, and I'm not going to even say now, but I will say later, that there's a liquor store within, within 200 feet of Southern University on Cooper Road, but, but that's neither here or there. But I'm just saying there, there are issues that, that we have to endure and, and, and make our decisions on. But, thank you, thank you, sir.
Well, I mean, if, if you want to help the guy up so bad, put it in your district. We don't want it in our district.
But see, 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 I'm not talking about...
Right.
See, that's the exact attitude that we have to do a last...
You just nailed it.
It's like, we don't want it. I mean, we, we want the guy to have a business, we just don't want it at that location. If it's on Yuri Drive, if it's in the right place, it's good. I mean, it's not good, but it's better than being in our neighborhood, than walking distance.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Monica Powell.
Hi, my name is Monica Powell. I'm a resident of Shreveport. I've lived at 10017 Georgetown Drive for over 15 years. I am currently the controller at Centenary College, and I have been a part of the Centenary community for over 23 years. Throughout my time at Centenary, I have developed close relationships with the students and their parents. I've been privileged to serve as a mother figure to some of the students. This gives the parents great pleasure in knowing that they can leave their students in a safe and caring environment. As a member of the student support team on campus, I've been able to watch the students thrive, graduate, and achieve their dreams. thrive, graduate, and achieve their dreams. This role has also allowed me to encounter some of the hardships that the students face on college campus, and many of these incidents involve alcohol. So having access to alcohol can cause these young people to make poor decisions. Over my 23 years, I've seen some students that come to college with full potentials and make bad decisions because they have access to alcohol. I've seen them, you know, I've seen this lead to sexual assault, death, mental illness. As a mother to over 600 students, I stand before you today asking you not to sell high-alcoholic beverages so close to campus. I'm asking that you support these students and give them an opportunity to live out their dreams and live their lives to the fullest. Thank you.
Good man. Pastor Chris Curry.
Jacob Jones of 236 Gladstone Boulevard, and, which is only a few blocks from Kings and Gilbert. Also the president of the Gladstone Area Partnership Neighborhood Association, which has invested several thousand dollars trying to come up with a plan to solidify the neighborhood and the surrounding area, which we would hate to see wasted with an undoing by introducing something that historically does degrade the quality of an area. For, for the brief time that I've been the president and gotten to review this plan, which is a continuation of Mr. Joyce's wife's efforts, and to expound on her, or just to agree with what Mr. Joyce said, I would love to live in a neighborhood and ensure that I continue to live in a neighborhood that, that I am not scared to let my child roam free, which most of the neighborhood kids do now. And if, if we do consider that this property faces a thoroughfare, as is said before, with Atkins property and residential areas budding up right next to it, I believe that at least the perspective that I hope that the council shares of all the residences is that it is a property that's a part of the neighborhood. And I hate to feel like it's a statement that has to be said, or a plea that has to be said, but I'll, I'll say in front of all of you, to try to appeal to you, please don't put a liquor store in our neighborhood. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Chris Curry. I'm pastor at First Presbyterian Church at 900 Jordan Street, and I'm a resident of 4041 Baltimore Avenue. I'd like to speak against and urge you to vote against this proposal to allow a liquor store to this address on Kings Highway. I'm not a resident of the neighborhood. I serve a church that is in Highland, but not immediately in the vicinity of this location. However, our church, along with other churches in the community, have heavily invested our resources, our volunteers, our tutors, and our financial resources in the Crestwell Elementary School, which I would point out is a Title I population, as well as a significantly racial ethnic school, the only elementary school in Highland. And we have seen enormous progress there through communities and schools and other initiatives there, and that is the closest school in the vicinity of where, I also say that I believe all the statistics about crime and vagrancy and other things that surround a location like this, and that is the, the most pressing concern to me, is that those children and families that attend that school that are already heavily disadvantaged, it is going to be destructive to them. And I am speaking not for them, but thinking about them as I urge you to consider voting against this proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Busher.
Reverend Curry, I want to, I want to thank you for, for your leadership, and I think that pretty much everybody on the council realizes the contribution that First Presbyterian makes to the, to the Highland neighborhood, and I just would be remiss if I didn't thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And Grayson will be there Sunday.
Former councilman, is Mr. Callahan approaching? I'm sorry. Okay. Councilman Jeff Everson.
Okay. My name is Patricia Gudoe, and I live at 240 Atkins Avenue. And I wanted to let y'all know that my husband and I, we have lived on Atkins since 1984. We have recently retired and we want to stay in this at present location. I have always loved this area and have never thought of relocating to any other part of Shreveport, nor go to Bossier City. Growing up my entire life in Shreveport, my family has always been in the liquor business. I grew up knowing quite a bit about it. I was part of my family business for many, many years. My family owned and operated different locations throughout Shreveport. A major thoroughfare was, one was on Mansfield Road, North Market, and Yuri Drive. Being civic-minded, my family never chose an area that was near a school, church, nor a neighborhood. Once my family chose a property for the new liquor business, it was never contested by the MPC, city council, or the citizens of Shreveport. Our family was always a respected family in the liquor industry. We went all by the rules, which you have to do. It's just part of the business, it's strict laws, and we abided by them, and we were good, and we served all walks of life. However, the retail liquor business is more susceptible to criminal activity, no matter what you do. It is just part of it, it's, we have, you get panhandling, shoplifting, robbery, and much worse. I know this because I have experienced it firsthand. It is just the nature of the business. There are other places around this area that would be most conducive to this, to a store besides this piece of property that's, that is trying to be zoned. I won't go into that because it's been, already been said many times. But quite a number of years ago, I attended a city council meeting. At this meeting, one of the proposals was a new zoning, for a new zoning for a liquor store in District F. At this time, Joe Shine represented the district. I remember him saying that Shreveport had too many liquor stores and needed more libraries. I felt like, as he did then, and I feel the same way today, the zoning change, the zoning change was declined at that time by the council, and today I'm hoping for the same results that Mr. Shine achieved. The family, the liquor store that I was at was one mile from my home, unless, and I could walk there, but it was on Yuri Drive, and it was all in commercial, and it was zoned correctly for that area. But I want to say Mr. Woods lives at 2.6 miles, and he's in, from his liquor store, which is in Queensborough, and he lives in Country Club Hills. My home was 900 feet away from the proposed site, and my question to the council is, how would you feel like living 900 feet from a liquor store? It is obvious to me that the Woods do not want a liquor store in their neighborhood either.
I have to, I have to tell you, your time has expired.
I'm pleased.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman, Councilwoman, Mayor. My name's John Atkins. I reside at 235 Kings Highway, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71104. I'm the owner of following properties in very close proximity to where the liquor store is proposed at 327 Kings Highway. These properties are as follows: 225 Kings, 231 Kings, 225 Kings, 247 Kings Highway, 249 Kings Highway, 257 Kings, 303 Kings, 303 Atkins, 321 Atkins, 327 Atkins, 335 Atkins, 3113 Centenary Boulevard, 3123 Centenary Boulevard, 3133 Centenary, 126 Centenary Circle, 3208 Alexander Avenue, 3325 Alexander, and 3350 Alexander. These buildings comprise 41 residential units in the immediate area of the proposed liquor store. In addition, I'm the owner, also the owner of 13 other properties in the immediate geographical area, within, you know, two, three miles at the very most. These properties comprise 58 residential units and seven commercial spaces. These properties represent a capital investment in this area, which I started in 2003 of over $5.2 million. Ashley Atkins, Dan Coruna, Jennifer Coruna, and I have improved these properties well beyond what has been needed to have them as rentals, because we care about the area and we care about the impact of our properties on the community. We have pride in what we do and the product that we provide to our tenants. We will continue, as we have, to invest and improve the Gladstone neighborhood. We have seen how an improvement in a few buildings such as these can be, begin to reshape and reclaim an older neighborhood. My father and my mother had six children. Of those six children, I am the only one that has chosen to call Shreveport my home. I have chosen not to live in a gated subdivision, nor will I ever. I have chosen to improve my, the neighborhood that I grew up in. Since 2010, the 2010 census, Shreveport has lost approximately 10,324 people, or 5.2% of our population. I have bucked that trend and implored other people to do the same. Please imagine that if a fraction of the population that left had done what my partners and I and Ashley Atkins have done, what impact it would have had on this community. I implore you to do the right thing and vote against allowing a liquor store at 327 Kings Highway. Please vote in favor of our neighborhood and the many that are against this, rather than the few that are for it. There is no credible evidence that being given that this would be a positive move for our neighborhood, no positive retributes, I mean, things whatsoever. This is not the vision that we have for our neighborhood going forward. Thank you very much.
Mr. Atkins, thank you for being here. As you indicated in your remarks, you and your family have invested millions of dollars in the area in the vicinity of this neighborhood, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Will the placement of a liquor store at the proposed location adversely affect the value of your property?
Yes, sir. And then, and I mean, the questions that will come to me is like, well, where do you come with that? Well, we provided plenty of data to the council that, I mean, it's not coming from our minds or our imagination whatsoever.
And will the placement of a liquor store at this location potentially impact your decision to make additional investments in this neighborhood?
Of course. And I've attempted to buy the land of the liquor store, but in my mind, it's for sale for $425,000. In negotiations, they reduced it to $390,000 and said that they would sell to us for that price. But it's not, it's not a commercial, there's no commercial viability at such a price. I mean, I think I, I don't remember what I offered, but it was at least $100,000 lower than that, and that offer's still good today. I mean, I'm willing to take that property off-market, willing to try to do something with, even if I don't have a plan today, just to uphold the neighborhood.
Nothing would please me more than if you and the owner could come to an agreement and then take this off the table altogether. But I understand you've done the best you can. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley Atkins. I reside at 126 Centenary Circle, 71104. I appear before the Shreveport City Council once again in an effort to appeal the MPC decision from November 2nd, 2017, which approved a special use permit for retail sales of alcohol with a few stipulations that could be sold at 327 Kings Highway, which is Zone C2. This proposed liquor store sits within feet from many residences and will greatly affect the quality of living in this historic neighborhood in terms of safety, quality of life, and property values. In addition to my home being within a few blocks of this location, I also own and manage multiple duplexes, fourplexes, and single-family homes totaling 41 potentially affected units, ranging in distance from feet from the store's entrance to a block of its location. The Metropolitan Planning Commission staff report dated October 2nd, 2019, less than a week ago, states, I quote, "A special use permit allows a pathway for evaluating and possibly approving a heavier use than what is typically permitted in a zoning district. A proposed use must be found to be compatible to the surrounding area and have sufficient mitigations in place to address potential nuisances. Retail sales of alcohol, particularly liquor, is only permitted in heavy, commercial, or C4-zoned districts, which is intended to accommodate intense uses that often involve outdoor activities or uses with potential nuisances that require a higher level of mitigation to minimize the negative impacts to our neighboring uses." The report goes on to say, I quote, from the MPC, "Although the proposed use is not for an onsite consumption of alcohol, the same types of issues and even more violent crimes are associated with retail liquor establishments. This report was drafted in response to a request for a special use permit to sell alcohol in a C2-zone location just like 327 Atkins, excuse me, Kings Highway, at 1911 Centenary Boulevard. The MPC staff recommended denial of this application, and the MPC voted unanimously, eight to zero, also to deny this application at its public hearing on October 2nd, 2009, less than a week ago. The decision to uphold the C2 zoning at this particular location due to proximity of the residences, Highland Park, and remaining C1 zoning, which is designated for, which is designed, excuse me, for adjacency to residential properties, is identical to what the residents of our historic neighborhood are asking for as well, except we also have two schools and multiple school zone crossings that are within feet of this location you must and should consider. As a CPA and former auditor, I understand all too well the most recent legislative auditors report noting some very serious concerns regarding our city's finances. It simply does not make any sense, not to mention does not follow the UDC code, the MPC precedence for the city of Shreveport to intentionally place an establishment such as this in a historic residential area that will erode the property tax base and drive families out of the middle of Shreveport."
Ms. Atkins, I have to tell you, your time has expired, but what, what impact do you think that the placement of a liquor store is going to have on the city's tax revenues from this area?
Well, they'll decrease. And it looks to me like we're looking for bond revenue right now, just to pay bills, just to support the debt. I don't, I don't know why you would, on purpose, erode the tax base. I mean, like, I mean, we've put $5.2 million in this general area. Those properties weren't worth that when we purchased them. We reinvested, we brought them up. I mean, go to, I would live in any of the properties myself. We're not slum lords. We make them very nice on the inside. In fact, I argue some of them are nicer than where I live. That's, we truly believe in that. Mr. Flory, do you have any, oh, you, I'm sorry, you look like you had a question?
I'm, I'm aware of the significant investment your family's made in this community, and I very much appreciate your remarks.
Councilman Green?
Yes, my remarks is to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, I just heard a statement that the bond proposal is to support the debt.
No, no, that's, that's not, that's not true.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought some of it was being used to support the interest payments.
No, you can't use the general obligation bond for that type of payments.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Commissioner Matthew Lynn. Welcome from the commission, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you, thank you for hearing me today. Matthew Lynn, 3030 Crestwell, 616 Kings, 620 Kings, 624 Kings. Today, it seems to be a lot about economic development, and in looking at economic development, I see a crowd- I see a crowd full of people who have spent some $10,000, some $100,000, some over $1 million on reinvesting in the area. The property that we're talking about has had zero investment over the last 25 years that I've lived down the street from it. It's had zero, yet everybody else in opposition to it has continually invested in this neighborhood. Now, I'm going to jump off the subject and I'm going to go somewhere else. I serve on a, on a state mental health board, and about 20 years ago, we moved from institutionalizing people to mainstreaming. So in mainstreaming, you have people that are, that are teetering. They're teetering on living in reality. And in teetering and living in reality, they take various medications, mood stabilizer, mood stabilizers, lithium, other sorts of drugs to balance schizophrenia, bipolar, borderline, different types of disease. And I realize that alcohol in the form of beer is nearby. I just want you to know that liquor is quicker, and it makes a big difference. If you take a person that is living in a house, that's fighting with sobriety, they're fighting with maintaining reality, and there's a bunch of them on every single block in Highland, and I know it, and most of y'all know it, and a lot of people back here know it, they're not going to get in the car to drive to get hard liquor, but they're going to walk, and they're going to get hard liquor. And that is the teetering point that I talked about in the letter that I wrote you. The teetering point that could take all of these people behind me that have invested tens, hundreds, and millions of dollars in restabilizing this neighborhood to make it a strong neighborhood, to make Shreveport a strong town, and you're taking that investment and you're laughing at it and you're throwing it in their face if you vote to approve this, if you vote to approve a building that has been dilapidated since before it was ever even occupied by Circle K. And so I ask you to please vote no today and end this charade. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. John Paul Young.
Hi there. Thank you all. My name is John Paul Young, 424 College Street, 71104. I live 10 blocks north of this corner that's in dispute. It seems to me that there are more reasons not to do this zoning change to allow a hard liquor vendor into this place than anybody here has written down or could write down. So I would like to say the things that I think are good about it. So that's, that's sort of like a cost-benefit analysis. So we've, we've talked about all the costs, or many, many costs, there might be more. Some of the benefits are, let's see, so, well, the person who owns it will make money, and the sales taxes from this particular corner will increase, maybe not enough to offset the property taxes that drop from nearby. There will be new bushes, there will be irrigated bushes, there will be a fence that's repaired, but it's just going to be a half-inch gap between that and a residential home right behind the store in question. And some jobs will be created, there will be a few people who get jobs selling alcohol at this store, and I think that might be all of them. So that's maybe four or five positive things, and they seem kind of minuscule in comparison to the potential collapse of the neighborhood immediately south, which is full of beautiful old mansions that not very many people can pay to maintain, the failure of Highland, which is my neighborhood, to revitalize and turn back into a place where people are willing to raise children even if they can afford to live somewhere else, and all the other ills that have been described. So it seems to me that the costs really dramatically outweigh the benefits in this case, and that's a judgment that is reflected in our current zoning rules for which you're being asked to vote a special exception without any justification at all that responds to any of the objections that have been raised. The closest response to those objections is the fence repair, and that is a laughing, is a laughable response to the concerns about security and neighborhood welfare that have been raised by this community and my community. And I can't imagine a motive for why anyone would vote for this in this particular neighborhood. We have plenty of residential, we have plenty of commercial areas where a liquor store can go. I have nothing against the purchase and the drinking of hard liquor. I do it myself. I'm late for cocktail hour right now, but, but I want, I want everyone to know that putting this next to a neighborhood, one-half inch from a residential property, is, is just farcical. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Michelle. Virginia Marks. Ms. Marks.
I am Ginger Marks. I live at 509 Linden. I am, I'm not part of this neighborhood. I am, I am just a retired school teacher. I get a drink with my friends every Fri- Friday, but I had some time on my hands two years ago, and I did some research, and I just found out two days ago that this had come up, and I went back. The research is clear. The facts are so strong that I'm going to do the best I can to avoid any sites that are selling liquor for sale, excuse me, for consumption off-site. This is the Baltimore study you all, I believe, were given. Violent crime linked more to Baltimore liquor stores than to cities bars and restaurants. And it says, "A 10% increase in access to liquor stores and beer and wine stores had a 37% greater association with violent crime in all areas." As I do the math, putting a liquor store in there will increase access to that by at least 33%. Here is a study done by, by the University of California at San Diego. Reducing the distance to the nearest liquor store by one aisle, and all the things we've been talking about are within that, leads to an average treatment effect of roughly 10 to 20% higher monthly crime rates. Violent crime and drug crimes are persistently affected. Here are two studies from the University of California at Riverside, indicating the greatest increase in crime comes from offenders aged 13 to 17, and the greatest single increase in violent crime is youth homicide. My husband has, has informed me today that there are grave issues here of historic injustice. But I'm begging y'all, this has nothing to do with the quality of this particular liquor store, and it's got nothing to do, I believe the proposed proprietor is a fine, good man, but this does have to do with-
Ms. Marks, your time is-
Our children and crime. And if, and if you vote for this, you are knowingly going to vote for an increase in crime.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. Mr. Edward Nader. Mr. Nader. Mr. Benny Thompson. Mr. Thompson. I have a, this person's address is 1301 Coats Bluff, and I can't read Marcel-
Marcel Minor.
Okay, Marcel Minor.
Marcel Minor, 1301 Coats Bluff. I prepared a statement. Mayor Perkins, esteemed city council members, gallery of conscientious residents, I address this body as a matter of right and wrong, and I speak on behalf of a fellow minority business owner. As difficult as it is to own a business, it's even more trying to be a successful business owner. Mr. Woods is a man who has created hundreds of jobs over the course of his long business career, and it's my understanding that he has a squeaky-clean record in regards to his business dealings. Esteemed city council members, ask yourselves, why such an outcry in regards to a wine and spirits business? He has petitioned to operate a legal business in the city limits, and if I'm not mistaken, this benefits the city that you oversee, i.e. tax income. Again, I remind you, his petition to operate passed in the MPC. The petition was upheld in this council hall and was also upheld in court. I ask you truly, what makes this business a threat to the community? And I preface that question with your consideration to that question with this. If you in fact believe this business to be such a detriment to the community, then I move right now that you close every wine and spirit shop in the minority communities as well. And I might add, I'm sitting here today learning of this city's fiscal downfalls over the last 25 years, coupled with a bond that apparently does nothing to stimulate opportunity in this city. Being a business owner myself, one thing that will get you out of this hole is jobs. And it's apparent to me that you need to get them everywhere you can utilizing entrepreneurs owning legal businesses. I can find more negative information behind a vacant lot or building having a negative effect on a community than a wine and spirit shop. Someone mentioned this would lead to crime and drugs. He's not selling drugs. Is this the concern, if, I'm sorry, if this is the concern, then the neighborhood should put pressure on their new police chief to make sure they protect Mr. Woods' business from all these horrible things that have been mentioned.
Mr. Minor, as with other speakers, I'll tell you that your time has expired, but I, I will make this, this comment as I did yesterday. I am committed to showing the same care and concern to all neighborhoods in this city, and so for as long as I sit on the council, if anyone comes before this council and requests a special use permit to locate a liquor store immediately adjacent to anybody's home, I'm going to vote against it, and that's all I'm asking my colleagues today to do. Thank you, sir. I move for 15 more seconds. Polly Williams.
Hello, my name is Polly Williams. I reside at 819 Robinson Place, 71104, in the Highland neighborhood. I've lived in the historic Highland neighborhood since 1993. This is my first city council meeting. When I first heard of the proposed liquor store, my first thought was the dread of the impending robberies that will potentially likely occur. I did a quick Google search of liquor store robberies in Shreveport, and I had no trouble finding numerous liquor store robberies. I made this visual aid so you could see at a glance the abundance of liquor store robberies in Shreveport, including the robbery and murder of the store's security guard, Michael Wayne Henry, in October of 2015 at the Thrifty Liquor on Linwood. There was also a shooting and attempted murder on October 6, 2004, at the Thrifty Liquor on Hollywood. There was also a shooting and attempted murder in August of 1995 at the Thrifty Liquor on Greenwood. I've also included information on numerous armed robberies that have occurred. August 2019 at the liquor store on Mansfield Road, August 2018 at the Thrifty Liquor on Hollywood, February 2017, Thrifty Liquor on Yury, November 2017, Thrifty Liquor on Linwood, May 2017, Thrifty Liquor on Linwood, August 2016, Thrifty Liquor on Greenwood, August 2015, Thrifty Liquor on Linwood, July 2012, Thrifty Liquor on Linwood, May 2004, Thrifty Liquor on Linwood, October 2004, the aforementioned robbery and murder at the Thrifty Liquor on Hollywood, 1995, the aforementioned robbery and murder at the Thrifty Liquor on Greenwood. I feel sure I probably left out a few because I only had a brief time to research this today, and with the enormous numbers of citizens who oppose this, I respectfully ask that you do the right thing and vote no on the addition of a liquor store in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Stacy Mallory.
Chair, while she's on her way up, I'd like to point out another elected official that's joined us today, Mr. Robert Lawrence, the president of the student council at Byrd, has joined us this afternoon.
Hi, everyone. I'm Stacy Smith Mallory, and I live at 235 Atkins Avenue. I'm here to voice my opposition to the liquor store going into the neighborhood. The proposed liquor store is very close to my home. Atkins is a cut-through for a lot of traffic going to some of the businesses on Kings. I know my neighborhood will, my street specifically, will see a lot more traffic, foot traffic and automobile traffic. I have a young child. My husband and I bought the home. We looked into the zoning, and we knew what was allowed and what was not allowed. This is not allowed, so based on that information, we invested in our home. We've recently improved our home, adding a new roof. I know that doesn't sound like a big investment to y'all, but it is to our small, young family. So whenever you have these zoning regulations, they're there to protect those property owners and to let us know what to expect when we invest in our community. What's being asked is that you change that. It's not really about Mr. Woods. I've heard a lot of argument over that he's a good businessman, and that's great, but we don't want that change in the zoning regardless of how good of a businessman he may be. That's not what we anticipated when we bought our house. It's not good for our neighborhood. There's no good reason to have it there. I ask that you deny it. There's no positive outcome for anybody that lives there. You're looking at devaluing blocks on blocks on blocks to create one store of tax revenue. There are other higher and better uses that actually fit with the current zoning that could go into that location. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. James Goddow.
And thank you. I'm James Goddow, 240 Atkins. We are a longtime resident of Shreveport. We've had houses in Highland that we remodeled, moved, we've lived in the current house in Atkins for over 30 years. I'll not go over a lot of the arguments that people have made. There is no rational argument for a liquor store. There are no benefits being shown for it to the community. So I can see no reason to do a special exemption. It was mentioned that Mr. Woods has got a spotless record, so he's followed the law for liquor. That's wonderful. That's, but that has nothing to do with this. He may be a good businessman, but this is not about him. This is about our community. When you hear the arguments that it'll be a cleanly-run business, that there won't be loitering on the parking lot, well, what I- be loitering on the parking lot, well, what I hear is, his parking lot will be okay, but all of that'll be moved to my driveway. So I don't see that as being a real benefit that he does that. There is nothing in regards to the schools that's a real benefit. The coach, he's left, but I like to compliment all the Byrd students because I see them walking by my house every day. And I see the ones that he's concerned about that leave after football practice when it's dark and are walking back. And they, that's putting them at risk, and y'all need to seriously consider whether or not that this is responsible use of that property. Thank you. Oh, I would also like to counsel, to thank the council for giving me the last word in the Gudow house, which has been something that's been unique in the 44 years of my marriage.
Glad we could accommodate, Mr. Gudow.
Mr. Graham Todd.
Mr. Graham Todd, 503 Atkins Avenue. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, members of the city council, thank you for this time. I was here two-plus years ago as we dealt with, first, the issue with Don's Seafood and the liquor store gas station there. Grateful for that decision and how that turned out. Obviously, we're back here to talk about the new liquor store on Kings Highway, one block from my house. I live at the corner of Atkins and Highland, for those who were not here two years ago. First, I want to address the issue of Centenary College and what the chief brought up. We made the decision after I retired from Barksdale in 2014 to move to Shreveport and settle down so my daughters could go to Cattle Magnet High, and then the goal, we're gonna try and brainwash them to go to this place called Centenary College. So we bought a house five blocks from Centenary College. As they looked at applying for schools, and I took them to Centenary, I got to meet Chief Walker's force. And as someone who spent his entire military career as either a special agent or as a JAG prosecutor, and so I'm very intimately familiar with investigating sexual assaults at the Air Force Academy, a college, and in the Air Force, and prosecuting them, and managing all of the courts marshals for Air Force Global Strike Command when I was a JAG, I can tell you from my experience, just like the chief's, that alcohol is a factor in probably, I can think of maybe two cases where alcohol was not a factor. One of those involved child molestation, okay? So usually, it is alcohol, and it usually is young people. That's my experience. But I made that decision about Centenary because of the safety that I knew that was gonna be there, because of Chief's force and the way they're working with Centenary. Centenary is growing, Mr. Fleury. It's increased its student enrollment by almost 175 since President Holloman took over. It's on the rebound because of what they're doing there. But I can tell you that when people come out of town, if they happen to drive that way down Kings Highway, I'm pretty sure they see a liquor store three blocks from the college campus. They're like, oh, great. The gentleman brought up liquor is quicker. Well, you know, kids are, most college kids are smart enough that they don't want to drive drunk, but it's not hard to walk drunk to a liquor store. My daughters tell me all the time about the drinking that does occur on campus, and I know the chief and his folks do their best to try and deal with that. The last thing I'd bring up is the Shreveport population has dropped by 10,000-plus in the last eight years. No one's saying there's a shortage of liquor. In addition, Shreveport is not a well-off community, so why do people need to be spending their money on liquor when our average median income is 9,000 less than the rest of the state? It's not the best way to, people be spending their money in addition. Just an extra thought. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ryan Woods.
Three minutes is not gonna be enough time to address all of these rebuttals that we have. I first want to start with, my name is Ryan Woods, 116 Carson, 7115. I want to start with property value. I understand that has been a concern of the good people of the Gladstone community, property value. I'm a real estate agent, as well as a real estate investor. I buy and flip houses. Anyway, I did research. I did research on the corner of Stratford and Yury Drive sits a retail liquor store location. Uh, this liquor store has been there for quite some time, and I did a property search from 2000, 2010, excuse me, 2000, 2005, 2010, 2015. And what I wanted to find out was, did price per square foot increase over those years with this retail liquor store sitting there? And directly behind it is a fence, and behind that fence is a house. Furthermore, unlike the current applications that's being applied for, there's a curb cut that leads into the Greenway Park and Broadmoor subdivision. Literally leads into it. Property value increased from 2000 to 2015, from $57 a square foot to $97 a square foot. More on it than that, there's another location at 8686 Yury Drive, sits here as a retail location, liquor, liquor, retail liquor store, excuse me. Same property search, 2000, 2005, 2010, 2015. Very similar to the other one. You drive out of it, you drive down a little further, and you turn right, and you enter a subdivision. You continue on that street, and you actually run into University Elementary. Beyond that, there also has been a new subdivision built directly in this vicinity. Once again, 8686 Yury Drive, the Thrifty Liquor there, there's a fence that runs this way. Neighborhood's right there to it. Property value increased from 2000, 2005, 2010, 2015, $59 to over $100 a square foot. I have that in the printout. I didn't send it to you guys. I apologize. But if you want to see it, you can. So any notion that property value is destabilized because of a business, I think is very unfair and a very aggressive stereotype being placed here. Property value is the main thing. Crime rate as well. Crime rate, there are so many variables that go into the crime rate. I think it would be naive of us to think that a business directly influences crime rate. There are so many variables, from poverty, job availability, morale of the, of the social class, police presence, so many. If you review crime rate, you won't find a business anywhere on there. You will not find it. Now, if you drill down, sure, poverty-stricken areas are filled with liquor stores, and they're filled with crime rate, too. So if you really dissect those studies that have been sent, I'm pretty sure you're gonna find out that the poverty has more to do with it than the liquor store. One at a time, I wanted to address one more thing, very, very important to me. There was an interview given, and the hours of operation and the acceleration of people moving south was a topic that someone was worried about. Hours of operation, the two subjects, subject studies that I talked about are open from 8:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. Friday and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. until midnight. Sunday, they're open from 10 to 7.
Your time has expired.
Their hours of operation exceed-
Let me ask you a question to let you finish your thought, okay? What, what, what do you want to say about the hours of operation?
Well, the hours of operations at the corner of Stratford and Yury exceed our hours.
What are the hours of that location?
8:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. And once again, there's a curb cut that spills into the neighborhood. 8:00 a.m. until midnight, Friday and Saturday. Sunday, they're open from 10 to 7. We're not even open on Sundays. The hours are very similar to hours that reflect, as a matter of fact, we don't open until 9:00. They open at 8:00. We close at 11:00. They close at 10:30. We close at midnight Fridays. Same, same as this location, who has stood the test of time. The property values increase, and when property value increases, typically crime rate doesn't follow, or people wouldn't purchase. It just, it just goes hand in hand. I also wanted to address, sir, if I could-
Councilwoman Fuller has a question for you, sir.
Yes.
How pedestrian is the area out at Stratford, and how pedestrian is the area out at University Terrace?
So, I meant university elementary. I was referring to that-
Right, the university area in that neighborhood, correct.
You drive, and you can turn in, and it-
How pedestrian is the area?
I would say it's no more pedestrian, especially the corner of Stratford and Yury. That curb cut spills into the neighborhood, and I'm not sure, but Stratford runs-
What's the adjacent, on the other side of the street, what's the adjacent neighborhood like?
More Stratford, at the corner of Yury, when you, if you're driving-
What's across the street from the Yury Drive?
A subway, a subway.
Well, there's two in Yury.
The one at Stratford, what's across the street?
A subway, in a chase.
Okay. How close is the, how close is the residential area on the other side of Yury Drive?
On the other side?
Mm-hmm.
Um, not, it's, I mean, there's businesses, and then there is a residential.
How easy is it to walk across the street from that neighborhood to that, to the Yury Drive location at Stratford?
Probably just as easy as it is to walk from Greenway, right around that corner, walk up the sidewalk, and enter that Thrifty Liquor.
But to cross, directly across the street?
No, you don't. The, the corner at Thrifty and Stratford, the neighborhood, there's a curb cut that enters the neighborhood. Do you, am I making sense?
I completely understand I'm asking you about the east side of Yury Drive.
Uh-huh.
How easy is it to cross Greenway Drive?
East west, I'm apologizing, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that.
The side closer to the river.
How, how hard is it?
How easy would it be when the speed limit is about 45 miles an hour? People normally go 53 there.
What's the speed limit on Kings and Gilbert?
It's 35.
So about five miles per hour difference?
But people's speed, 10 miles over.
You're assuming, that's, that's very assumption.
Where's actually 35? It's 35 right there. It's 35, and then it speeds up on down.
But also, how many rental properties are in that area now behind, behind the area? You, you mentioned the price, but how many of those properties are for sale, and how many are for rent right now?
Now, I can pull that data if you would like me to have a sense of it.
That would be great. But the other thing is, there's already a distinct difference between the socioeconomics in the adjacent neighborhood when we're talking about south on Yury compared to the very vulnerable area that already exists on the north side of Kings Highway.
So what vulnerable area are we referring to?
I'm talking about Highland, north of Kings Highway.
Are we referring about specific demographics? What, are we referring to the specific demographics? So-
The median income actually on the, the, on the sheets, the, let's see, let me pull this back up. Give me one second.
Can I address something?
The marketing sheets that actually went out on this, the flyer actually said that, I've got it right here, the median household income, 46,000, but the per capita income from the first mile radius of your proposed location is 24,981. Can you tell me what it would be if we were in either, either of those other two areas?
Counselwoman, I, unfortunately, I can't give you any answers.
Because I'm imagining they're a little bit higher, and that's something that actually, like, goes back to what I'm saying about this area already being a little bit more vulnerable to the other issues. So the other areas had more stable numbers as far as crime and education and jobs-
The distance between the two.
Than the area that we're talking about right now, where this location would go in at Gilbert, which is facing my district, which is north of Kings Highway in that little piece. But my, but my district is actually also west on Gilbert as well. But what I'm saying is, that area already has higher crime stats to begin with, and it's a lot more pedestrian, is already seeing an uptick in walking traffic.
Got you.
So you can't, it's not really apples to apples, as people like to say.
It's not similar, the demographics aren't similar, Ms. Fuller? The demographics aren't, aren't similar?
They're not. They're actually not even when you control for race and socioeconomics, getting education.
So the demographics between Broadmoor and Greenway are not similar to Grant, to Gladstone subdivision?
They might be, they might be similar to Gladstone, but the issue is north of Kings Highway.
But there's no-
And the other transient traffic that's going to be coming to that shop.
People who are objecting are not from the north side of Highland.
Quite a few of them are.
Okay. I also wanted to address, real quick if I could, the petition. I understand there's 1,000 signatures, and I understand, and I respect that. In this immediate area, there's roughly, what, 43,000 people? So the 1,000 signatures, while we respect them, only account for a very small percentage of the people. And if that petition was opened up to entire cattle pairs, we're talking about a percentage of less than 1% to the entire population.
Thank you, sir. I will comment that in my year on the council, I have, I have never received a petition with 1,000 signatures concerning anything, so that is a very-
Oh, well, no, I just, I just heard somebody say it. They also wanted to address with you, if, if I could, really, if I could, because you brought up a comment-
Sir, your time has expired.
Hold on a second. You still have questions, though.
Okay, I'm on board. Mr. Woods, thank you, and I'd like to share the same profession. I've, I've been in real estate. I've been a real estate agent since 1999, 97, a broker since '04, an appraiser since '99. I appraise about 50 houses a month in the Shreveport Bowser area. I take, and this goes to both sides here, when you talk about property value, it has to be tested. I think one thing that we're not taking into account here is, let's say that this store does go in, and just because they don't want it near them, and I, I'm very familiar with the one on Yury Drive, both of them, they've been there for quite some time.
Quite a while.
But, you know, in value, you have to test the value. It's almost like a litmus test type deal. It has to be proven, and it ha, and it takes more than just six months to a year, and I, and I, I see what you've done, you've researched it. But I guess what I'm gonna say is, what if these people don't want to live, you know, they don't want to back up to a liquor store? And so they decide, okay, we're selling, and we're ready to get out. I owe $100,000 on it. I've been here 20 years. I didn't sign up to have a liquor store right behind me. I'm gonna drop my pri, only owe 100. I'm gonna sell it for 150 just to get out, but my property gets valued at 200,000. Once that starts, we could see a trend. So I guess what I'm saying is, and, and I respect what you're saying, and yes, our market has appreciated every year over the last 20 years since I've been doing appraisals. When I started doing appraisals in Broadmoor, they were $55 a foot. Now they're over, I do some that are $100, $120 a foot in Broadmoor. I guess what I'm saying is, it hasn't been tested yet, so I'm not quite sure that the, that the whole thing about property value is, is true because people could fire sell their properties, and then that lowers the value of the property.
Um, I would like to say that there was a comment made that a liquor store opening would accelerate the people moving south. I did the research. I broke down the demographics. The people that are moving south, when you take a step back from that, and I'm not accusing you of anything, but even what you're saying, that reminds me of the 50s and 60s and white flight. And the phenomenon, I'm, I'm not accusing you, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not accusing you of anything.
I didn't, I, I'm dealing with, I'm, property value has nothing to do with water-
But when I break down the demographics that are moving south, and I, and I understand it, I am, I'm speaking directly to Council Nickerson, who is not here.
All I'm saying is, I'm making a point that I believe that whenever, if you're gonna talk about property values not decreasing, you need to wait for a year to make that statement.
I gave 15-year, that from 2000 to 2015.
I'm talking about this particular area.
I understand. The last thing I wanted to say is, white flight is defined as the phenomenon when white Americans move from the urban and inner cities to the suburbs.
It's completely irrelevant. It goes back to my statement about redlining earlier.
Nobody called up white flight, council.
It's called outward migration. Now that's the PC term.
All right. Like I said, thank you for your time.
Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Woods.
Uh-huh.
Outward migration. Thank you, thank you for your research.
You're welcome.
I mean, others, others made comments, and, and they wasn't interrogated like you were. But you, but obviously, you had done your, your homework, and you came prepared to express what you felt was some of the compelling negatives, as well as the positives of this, of this debate. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Woods.
You're welcome.
Let me ask you a question. Sorry, Mr. Woods, Mr. Woods, I had one question for you. At the, at your current, and I'm asking this question, and I want everyone to know, because Mr. Woods' current store is in my district.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to ask if, have you had any, I saw some stats up here earlier, so I want to know if, have you had any shootings or murders at, at your location now?
Knock on wood, we've never been robbed. I know, I know she had her statistics. We've never been robbed, and knock on wood. I know lift, she talked about a lot of liquor stores being robbed. Family Dollar's robbed just as much. Family Dollar's have the notion to put alcohol in their stores. I believe Bowser is already doing it. There is, this is a very aggressive stereotype that has been placed here. Very aggressive stereotype that has been placed here. Thank you.
I'm sorry, one more question, Mr. Woods, I'm sorry, one more question. I, I want to, just be, I mean, we're just asking, I understand you first, but we just want to ask a couple of questions.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
And your hours of operation now are from?
9:00 a.m. until 11:00, Monday through Thursday. Friday, 9:00 until midnight, not open on Sundays.
Not open on Sundays.
Are those the hours you're requesting for this location?
Those are not, but we're not open till 2:00 a.m. in the current neighborhood, and we wouldn't do that in the new neighborhood either.
So the hours, I'm sorry, Councilman Green, go ahead.
I, I don't want to-
No, no, Councilman Green.
Talk, I don't, I'm not sure about hours. I apologize, if, if we were approved for the new location.
Mr. Woods, I'd just like to thank you for doing your homework. I, I'd like to thank you for your courage. As Councilman Bradford said, there have other speakers that have come up, and they would not drill like you, but you stood the test. And I just want, I, I've known you from the time you was basically born in the world. You outstanding young man. You, you've done your homework, as Councilman Butcher said, he's in the same field that you in, and I just want to commend you for coming up here today, and even with the questions, even with the backlash, that you still stood your ground. I just really appreciate intelligent, anybody that's intelligent, but I really am proud of intelligent black men like yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Ms. Robin Schneider.
Robin Snyder, four twelve Oakley. I am a retired police lieutenant. There's two thoughts here about the liquor store. First, you have the old, old, broken window theory that Councilman Bradford and I are real familiar with when we operated the weed and seed program in Queensborough, Ingleside. What that theory basically states, that if a building stays vacant long enough, pretty soon another building next to it will be vacant. You'll have a broken window and pretty soon the whole street starts to go down. And let's look at Kings Highway. First of all, Kings Highway's name is kind of misleading. Once upon a time, there was a woman named Mary Ellen Foster, not related to the politician Fosters. But she built a great big old house where LSU hospital was, and she wanted a fancy name. So she called it Kings Highway, one word. We have kind of sign makers that kind of like to make signs any way they want to make them. It used to be, Piermont used to be two words. Well, it was one word, Kings Highway. It is not a highway. It is designated a thoroughfare now and it is designated with businesses. These businesses include a marijuana dispensary. It includes a tattoo shop. It includes a dog groomer shop. My dog gets his butt shaved, I have to be honest about this. It includes a restaurant that serves margaritas. It includes a college, which we should be training students how to be adults. It does include a high school of students that do walk late at night. Now, it has been mentioned that their crime does accrue on liquor lots. She mentioned Michael Henry. That made my heart break. Michael Henry was a Shreveport police officer. And he was killed on a thrifty parking lot after he wasn't a police officer anymore, trying to save the clerk. That did make my heart break a little bit. Michael Henry was six foot seven, okay? He was a big, tall, black guy and he had a gentle heart. And he died before he could get to LSU, so that did make my heart break a little bit, okay? He was a good guy. But back to the history, okay? This location is across from a post office and a Circle K.
Ms. Snyder, as with other speakers, I have to tell you that your time has expired.
Ms. Snyder, let me ask you, do you ever go to the post office over there at home?
Yes, my son was in Iraq for three years. He is a disabled vet. He spends his time selecting houses in Highland and rebuilding them. He's an architect, historical engineer. He saves one house at a time for disadvantaged people. And he's got a broke neck.
Did you ever get robbed there?
No, I don't get robbed there. The Circle K has a shoplifting problem because that's the policy of Circle K's. They don't stop shoplifters. And my hope is, if this does pass, that the police department will make a little bit more effort to solve the crime that's along Kings Highway, which this section of Kings Highway has a little bit of a crime problem. And that doesn't have anything to do with packaged liquor.
That's right.
That's just my opinion, but you know, I'm an old cop, so you know, I, I worked with the bottom boys, so I'm an old cop, okay? So, you know.
Councilman Green?
Ms. Snyder, I, I don't know if I, if I had dozed off, I'm, I'm probably the oldest person up here, but did you say something about in this area that there's a marijuana dispensary?
I'm sorry, what, sir?
Did you say some marijuana is over in that area?
I'm, I'm not hearing what you're saying, I'm old.
He's asking for the address of the marijuana.
Down, down by LSU, it's been approved for the marijuana dispenser and the Long John Silver of all places.
Okay, okay.
So, I mean, this is a stretch of road that's got everything.
Yes, ma'am, I, I, thank you.
I mean, I can tell you the whole entire, Mr. Atkins that was up here, his family historically has been in this area since before the turn of century. It was taken into the city in nineteen twenty-two.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and it's called Waterside because that's where the boat used to come up Pier Biao and turn around because the Red River was clogged. If you dig down three feet, you hit water, okay?
Councilman Bradford, what was your remarks to Snyder?
I, I would be remiss if I didn't say hello, and you mentioned weed and seed, and, and Robin, you know, we, we did some of our great, great work. Try, trying to, I mean, the weed and seed concept was that we weed out the bad and we reseed it with the good. And we did that.
We did that.
And it's a program that I hope that we can reinitiate. But I, but, 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 but your work in, in, in Shreveport as a police officer, as well as a, a citizen is well documented and appreciated. I, I just want, I just want to say, I, I, I'm happy to see you, but I am more pleased to have worked with you over the years to make a difference in our city.
Well, what's the best city in Louisiana? Shreveport.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Snyder, one more, Ms. Snyder, Ms. Snyder. Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you, Chair. What, in your estimation, is the difference? You said that the crime isn't, is not caused by the act, the packaged liquor. So why do people have this idea that it exacerbates it?
Historically, people have a perception. Okay, it's all about perception. This store will have cameras, they will report crime. Circle K has a policy of not, of their employees not stopping crime. But Mr. Woods is a businessman.
That's right.
He does not want to lose business.
Yeah, of course.
So he's going to have cameras, he's not going to allow his employees to get hurt. And he's going to, if we, we have a very good property standards lady assigned to our area, Ms. Jackson. And if the, if the citizens call her and tell him he's not keeping the dumpster area clean, she will be on them. I mean, she will be knocking on that door saying, I got a citation book. I can write you, because there are citations you can write for failure to, for a business to keep their property clean.
My next question, though, what about when people walk off of his premises?
That it's struck in public, it is walking with liquor, and there is a federal post office across the street and the law is higher across the streets. And those ladies that work that post office, they don't mess around.
So you're saying that this is going to end up being, if that's a potential issue, that it's an enforcement issue?
Right, exactly. And the guys that run the oil change business, they don't mess around either. Just in my experience, but then, you know, people, they open up to me, so I mean, they don't, I don't have that problem. Now, maybe the, the mothers that live on Atkins might have a different perspective because they have little children.
Do you think there's a difference between a liquor store and a purveyor of fine spirits?
Yes and no. I mean, I went, I was curious, so I went to Mr. Woods' store. I was curious because I had never been in his store. So I went over there, I went in and I bought liquor. So I went in there to see, and his lot was clean, his store was clean. It was nice, it was nice. I mean, it was very nice, you know? Uh, so, it wasn't a regular liquor store.
What about the properties adjacent?
But, yeah, see, they were just not, but they were not under the same zoning laws. They were not under the same zoning laws.
What about the vacant lots across the street?
But say, vacant businesses aren't maintained historically. That's part of the broken window theory that's been proven.
But do you think that goes back to what people were saying earlier when they were saying, well, this is because, do you think that there's a chicken and egg thing there?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. James West. James West.
My name is James West, I live at forty forty-one Crustwell Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Mayor and Council. Nice to see you all, I've had the pleasure of meeting all of you except for perhaps you, Councilman Green. I, you all probably see me attending a lot of these meetings and I appreciate your demeanor and even more than that, your candor on the council. I come to these meetings and not because I have any issues, because I have a love of the city and I care about what goes on in the city. I'm one of these people too that's invested a lot of money in this neighborhood. And I'd like to back up just one minute to that budget discussion that was up here on this screen a minute ago. And it may have just gone over the top of everybody's head because there was a lot of stuff rolling by there. But let's talk about that Gulf Enterprise Fund for just a moment and that, and that budget. And you may have noticed that those Gulf memberships have increased one hundred percent. If you want to back up to that? So, what's going on over there at, at Quirby's Park? Well, the city's spending a lot of money and a lot of private citizens are spending a lot of money because of the care of that neighborhood. And that's why I'm here today. This, this MPC stuff kind of tickles me. I read the, uh, report on the storage building and the MPC writes the report says it's inconsistent with the neighborhood. And yet the recommendation is to build it, and I don't ever understand that stuff. And reading the MPC's, uh, special use permit on the UDC, it differs from the old ZBA and these uses are scrutinized by the MPC Board to determine three things. And they are, whether it is an appropriate activity at their proposed location, how it might impact the neighboring land uses and the health, safety and welfare of the public, whether any negative impacts can be successfully mitigated. I believe that this application sort of fails in a lot of these areas. And it, it's kind of disheartening, you know, to invest money, private funds in city infrastructure and to work on these things on a daily and hourly basis. The headquarters of the Quirby's Park Foundation is in that post office across the street. So I do have some knowledge of what goes on in that neighborhood. A, as I do in Quirby's Park, I'm in them every day and I live blocks away. I've reached across the aisle to several of you all, to some things that are near and dear, uh, to, to some things that you all cared about. My hand has been extended, I'm not here asking for something always from my neighborhood. And you know who I'm speaking of, up there. I have reached out, my hand's still out there and it will remain out there because I care about this city. Uh, I had no knowledge of Mr. Wood. Congratulations on your successful operation. I didn't have a clue who was in this liquor store when I came here today. So with that, I'd just say please vote no and thank you.
Mr. Sammy Mears. Sammy Mears, nineteen oh-one Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one oh one. I'm here today to voice my comments on the three twenty-seven Kings Highway store as well. I said this two years ago, and again, I'm saying no way, I don't see it happening. There's just no liquor store. I've got nothing personal against Bernie Woods at all, I don't know him, but I just don't see it happening. I am making this, I'm asking the council to please vote no. The reason is for a number of years, this caused a lot of harm and trouble over on Kings Highway and Gilbert. The shooting, drive-by shooting, fighting, stabbing, break-ins, hitting with bottles, even fights that were over a stupid girl, which made no sense. All of this was turned into a reenactment of the Civil War. I'm not going to put up with it. I didn't put up with it then and I'm not going to put up with it now. I won't tolerate it. I'm just not going to. One thousand people, including myself, signed a petition and expressed to stop this liquor store as a red light. Now, people have talked to me by phone or even on the bus and they want something different for their kids. They'd like to see an ice cream shop or a soda shop, a pizza place, a yogurt shop or even a sandwich shop for the kids to hang out after school, just like they done on Saved by the Bell when they've had the Max and what's happening when they had Rob's Place. At least the kids on the show had a place to hang out. What about these kids? Don't they deserve a place to hang out too after school with one of those things? You might think about that. I was even convinced two years ago and even today that the people were very much right on about their comments. Someone said that they were wrong two years ago, but they were not. They were right on then and they're right on now. They hit the nail on the head and I saw it then as I do today. It doesn't matter if it's, um, if the neighborhood would be high, low, poor, or even in between. People would only care about maybe the liquor store and not people. In this case, if Bernie Woods does that, that's ridiculous. No liquor store, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mears. Teresa Edgerton Scott. And Sadini Smith, you're welcome to come up together if you'd like, stand with each other.
I'm short too. My name is Teresa Edgerton Scott, I live at five forty-nine Wilkinson, seven eleven oh four. But I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Highland Restoration Association, the historic and transitional neighborhood that's north of this proposed location. As many people have referenced, the Johns Hopkins study that shows that, um, greater access to carry out liquor stores experienced more violence neighborhoods than those that where the, uh, alcohol is consumed inside the establishment. And you saw that there are just stacks of studies that show that. And you know, it's, it's like they say, science is true whether you believe it or not. So there are a lot of, of studies that indicate, uh, the correlation. A vibrant, thriving neighborhood is an economic boon to this city. A revitalized Highland would translate into investments of money in the economy as owners modernize, renovate and maintain their homes. That is economic development as well. My husband and I have spent a couple of hundred thousand on ours. And, uh, you know, because it's an old home, you just keep on. But I guess one thing that really bothers me is the time and effort we put into a master plan and we, you know, uh, developed what would be appropriate in certain zones. And then we keep coming and asking for zoning variances. I mean, it's, it's what's gotten us in trouble in the past and I can't see that it's going to be positive in this case either. I'm trying not to repeat what other people said, let's see what else. I guess I want to make myself very clear when I say that Highland Restoration Association on many occasions has stood shoulder to shoulder with Stoner Hill, with, as we are today, with the Gladstone neighborhood. We aren't a neighborhood that's just traditionally been interested in ourselves. And I know I personally have worked with, um, Mr. Bradford and others in developing initiatives in the Martin Luther King area, as well as Highland and Stoner Hill with the Early Head Start Program. I believe that the quality of life will suffer if this liquor store variance is approved. And I would ask you to listen to the concerns of people like myself who have, for thirty-five years, I've been Highland my home. And, uh, I think, you know, the concerns of us, of, of us who live there are as important as an entrepreneur. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Smith?
Nothing, just, I wanted to go on record saying that Highland Restoration is, is in opposition of this, you know? And I live right there, right there beside it, I do. I get a little trouble now from people walking the Circle K, like Levett was stating. Highland is super, super, yeah, pedestrian. I myself and, and my husband ride our bikes every day through Highland. I love Highland and I would, I would welcome anything else from Mr. Woods. Take that building, open, open something, I would love it. But I don't want a liquor store. We have enough there already. Let's move forward with something that the whole neighborhood can enjoy, not just twenty-one and up. Let's have some sandwiches. I love biking to them. Anything. Bring me something else, something I can be proud of and that I can participate in. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bernie Woods.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, Councilman, Mr. Mayor, and to all the neighborhood people. I would like to start off by just apologizing to all these people out here who really have a huge misnomer about me and about what a liquor store can or will do. Now, I have a record, so to sit here and to hear all of this just makes me look around and wonder who are they talking about? I've been in the liquor business for eleven years, eleven years. And so, all of this stuff that I'm hearing about that's going to happen, I know for a fact, but it's not. I guess I better address the council. I'm sorry. I apologize. Number one, I am a college-educated person. Went to Louisiana Tech, graduated from Louisiana Tech. From Louisiana Tech, I went to go in the military, so I went to officer school. I became a military officer. After officer school, I began in the pilot training, became a pilot in the United States Air Force. After the Vietnam War, I got in the car business. And I worked my way from selling cars to owning two dealerships, two dealerships. So significant investments in this area. I sold my dealership and came back here, bought one in Louisiana. When Ford went through all of these changes and they regrouped, I got out of the car business and I signed a contract and went down to New Orleans and did a contract with FEMA. Two years, I completed a contract with FEMA, the Army Corps of Engineers. I faced that contract. So, I have, and I got to stand on, I've been in the liquor business, I've been in this for eleven years. And here's what's happened in eleven years. I've never, ever, ever got one citation. I've never sold to a liar. I've never closed late. I've never opened on Sunday ramblers against the law. So, the notion that all of these things are going to happen is just about somebody else. It's not about Bernie Woods. If my record says that I operated for eleven years and I have not encountered one single thing that I heard all these people talk about, then you've got to judge me on that. Don't judge me about all this business about shh cuttings. No cuttings, no fights, no anything. And it's a citizen really, really, really having the opposition, I would invite them to call, check with the police department. There are records that show that for eleven years, there's been no incident with my operating this business. So I'm not just a good business person. I'm a good person. I have security cameras. I have lights. I clean my place every single day. I pay extra money for it to be clean and decent and safe. Now, the school must put out kids on my campus. You're talking about all school kids. I make sure that every kid that comes from J. S. Clark, get in their cars safe. Every single day, get in their cars safe. Because when they come in, I'm going to make sure nobody's going to bother them. There's no law about this store, about one or all of them. There's not one. Now, I take care of my property.
Mr. Woods, your time has expired, but I'm sure there are questions.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Fuller, first.
Okay, Mr. Woods, I have a few questions for you, so bear with me. The first is, when you talked to the MPC and you went forward before, there were some stipulations. Are you okay with all this, with the six stipulations that were brought to you originally?
I am.
Have you been approached by, about any additional stipulations?
Um, yes.
I don't know that my colleagues have seen these, but I proposed an amendment. And it's the seventh line and there's a restored glass front, introducing a gable parapet feature in the front that accents the entryway, introducing canopies or other features to complement the facade, introducing siding, incorporating the brick columns and the wooden fence, and introducing a wider sidewalk in the front and adding like some planters in front of the side. Are you okay with all of those?
Let me, for sure, say now, you read off a lot of stuff and I don't want to commit to something. I didn't, excuse me, I do not want to commit to something that, number one, that I haven't seen and hadn't studied and hadn't penciled. I don't want to go there, but here's what I want to tell you, just so this council know. I invested three quarters of a million dollars in that location. Three quarters of a million dollars, two million dollars is just for restoration of that building. So the notion that it's going to be some eyesore is just not there. I'm going to spend two hundred thousand dollars doing the building only. So, the stuff you're talking about doing, I would ask that you leave it up to me to make sure that it's presentable. And I'm a man of my word and I hope it's first class.
My next question though, okay. Were you ever approached about a compromise about, maybe about the product that you had in your store? Maybe make, to ensure that it was similar in like alignment with Cuban liquor or something like that?
No, no.
So what was that conversation like?
I haven't been, I've had a lot of people suggest that I put cheese and stuff in the liquor store, but I can tell you this. The size of that building won't accommodate that. I wanted to make it a first-class packaged retail outlet. Not cluttered, not selling hats, not selling cheese, a first-class retail package store. And so, it won't accommodate a whole lot of stuff. It needs to have room where people can move and have access to egress and get in and out. So, to answer your question, I've had talk about that, but I just don't see how that building would accommodate that.
Who do you perceive to be your target audience?
Everybody that's in that area.
So, but like by socioeconomics, are you looking more at like your high-end wine and whatever or just anybody off the street?
No, no. My liquor store now, I sell an eighteen thousand dollar bottle of liquor at my store. And I sell a two dollar bottle of liquor. Now, there is no such thing as, you know, when you're selling, when you're retail liquor business, you need to have product that will accommodate clientele. And so it's going to be some very high-end liquor and some very reasonable-priced liquor.
I feel like I have one more thing. Would you be willing to consider hours of operation instead of eight to midnight, eight to ten?
Step back, step back just a little bit. There you go right there. I'm sorry. No, so I can come through clear. That's it. Okay, I'm sorry.
I had proposed an eight to, an eight till eight timeframe. Would you be amenable to an eight till ten timeframe, Monday through Saturday? Which is in alignment with everything else on the street.
No, I don't, I cannot tell you conclusively that, that those hours, number one, would work. I know Thrifty's open at eleven, right down the street. Now, Thrifty's open at eleven. And what I try to do is this. I try not to be higher than Thrifty's in my pricing and not lower. I try to be right in the middle. I try not to operate beyond them or past them. So, what I'm trying to do is be right in the middle of service providing in terms of time. Now, you asked about ten. I would consider it. I can't say now. I think that that ten o'clock hour, one hour, means that the customers who shop me, who are a little bit late, will go to Thrifty's. And the last thing you want is a business person to send your customers somewhere else.
My issue is just that the Brochures Across the Street and the Family Dollar on Kings Highway both close at ten o'clock every, they close at ten o'clock.
But the one across, but Circle K opens twenty-four seven. Circle K, Circle K opens twenty-four seven, seven days a week. I'm still in competition with them. They sell B and Y. You know what I'm saying?
Monday through Friday, you'll be open till midnight or till ten o'clock. What's your current plan?
No, right now we're open from nine until eleven and from nine until twelve on Friday and Saturday. And not on Sundays at all. And that's my choice, by the way. The law passed and when they passed it, I said, I don't care to open on Sunday. Sunday is church day and family day. And so I don't open.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Flurry. Mr. Wood, I'm looking at what Councilwoman Fuller has proposed here. And it certainly looks with, the first seven there is what we'd already, I think, you'd looked at. She's asking for some, a couple of, it looks like to me, those things that you'd want to consider. Restoring a glass in storefront, that's not a...
Well, he's already doing that.
I'm going to get that building. It's going to be completely new. So that's already part of the plan. I told you...
Okay, well, let me, let me just make sure we're on the same page here.
I believe we are.
I may not be on the same page. I may be the one all out. But introduce a raised gable, what is that word? Feature in the front that accents the entry and provides articulation of the roof line. I don't understand, but that should be something that you want to...
I'm going to do that anyway.
Yeah.
I have planned to do that.
And what she says, introduce canopies. Canopies are a good thing.
I'm going to do that.
Introduce siding to accent existing brick, siding.
I planned on stucco in the whole building. That's the whole thing. That would change the whole facade. It's going to look like new.
Okay. Brick columns and the existing wood fence, is that something new? Brick columns into the existing wood fence. I mean, is that, that's new that you don't know about?
Wait a minute, is this on the fence? Are we talking?
On the wooden fence.
Oh, yeah, I was going to put a new fence up. I don't know how it's going to be.
With brick columns.
Don't commit about that one. I know it'd be a nice fence. It would be a nice fence. I probably can put the brick columns in there. I mean, I probably got the budget.
Okay.
It better make the deal. I'll say yes.
Well, I'm just saying, she's, the planner, the things she's asked are very classy type, yeah.
It's going to be first-class, guys. I promise you that.
Councilman Neflix.
Mr. Woods, thank you for your remarks. Do you own the property that's the subject of this application?
Say it one more time?
Do you own the property which is the subject of this application we're discussing?
That's a technical question. There's money, been holding it for two years. There's a contract, there's binding. I have a binding contract with money on it, yes.
Have you closed the sale?
To answer your question, no. It was supposed to happen in September, end of September. I got an extension.
Have you ever owned the property?
Have I ever owned what?
Have you ever owned the property that we're talking about today?
No, I've never owned it. I don't understand. I'm purchasing it.
Do you presently have a written lease for this property?
I have a contract, a sale contract. I have an enforceable sale contract on the property.
So you don't have a lease?
I have a lease. I have a sale contract.
Okay. Have you ever had a lease on the property?
Yes.
When?
Over the past two years, probably two or three times. It went from lease to purchase, lease to purchase. So I've had several.
Presently, you're not leasing the property?
Presently, I have a binding for sale contract with money up. I guess he'll understand that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Councilman Brathwaite.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Woods, good to see you and thank you for your remarks. I think they was very compelling to the professional operation that you operate. And I had a chance to also, to visit your location, to sit around and to just protect the comings and goings of your customers. And I want to commend you on the level of service that you provide as well as the courtesy that you show your people that comes and shop with you. Now, I just, I just was made aware of Councilwoman Fuller's stipulations. Mr. Chairman, my concern is that it's been, you know, it's been, it's been two years. Mr. Woods have accepted the stipulations that was afforded him by the MPC. MPC have the staff and the resources to go out and to vet this property. Like they do all properties that come under their preview and they make a recommendation to their, the staff make a recommendation to their board and the board either modifies, seps, or deny the application. And I think, I think the, I think the staff and the board presented Mr. Woods with some very reasonable accommodations in regards to what they would like to see happen at that location. We, as a council, don't have those resources to go out and to review this, these type of issues. Mr. Woods has mentioned that he intend to invest another two hundred fifty to three hundred fifty thousand dollars to make this property as prevailing as its current property, which I think is a very excellent decor. Now, the only thing that I think, Mr. Chairman, I would like to propose, if Mr. Woods is in acceptable to it, and I think, I don't want to see him in this event, if this council choose to allow Mr. Woods to operate, to be, to be in competition, to be competitive to who he considers his competitor, the eleven closing, Mr. Woods.
Yeah, I will, I will, I will commit to that for sure.
So, instead of the, instead of the midnight closing, the eleven closing to be consistent with the other, with the other location like yours.
I'll commit to that, okay.
So, I mean, we're not there yet, but I'm on for that as an amendment if, or if we choose to go that, go that way. But I, but I think you, you did, I mean, you do a good job. My experiences with you have been very positive. You donated to none, to entities that, less fortunate. You provided resources for high school kids who would not nearly have the resources to participate in certain activities. I mean, you've done, you've done, you, I mean, when you was in the car business, you allowed nonprofits to utilize some of your vehicles, especially your vans, to go on field trips and so forth. So, I mean, your, your professional character and the fact that you feel compelled to be a corporate entity of returning to the community, some of the, some of the appreciation they give you, I think is also admirable. So, I just, I feel good because I know the type of establishment you operate. Oftentimes, I say, you know, we have these type of, these type of meetings. We had one two weeks ago, two weeks ago. We had a meeting that we got a lot of innuendos and a lot of comments, commentary that I thought was, some of it was inappropriate and sometimes inaccurate. Because I use, I use, I use, I use as a cliche that we don't see things as they are. We see things as we are. And, and it was mentioned earlier, and then I'm going to be finished, that this is not a black or white thing. And I want to say, after the last meeting two weeks ago, I called the mayor the next day. Because the mayor even said, you know, I'm tired of hearing black and white, white and black, da-da-da-da-da, okay? And I said, "Mayor, let's contact the Human Relations Commission and let's contact some other entities with this report and let's reestablish a pathway to creating better race relations." We got to create better race relations in this city. Now, now, we can do it. We did it before. We can, we can do it.
We should.
We can do it, but my point in saying that is that I cannot be naive enough to think that some of this is not race-related. And I make my decisions and I tell people this. For thirty years on my day job, I manage an operation. And in my operation, I supervise both white staff and black staff. both white staff and black staff. I cannot leave my office at 2:00. In my office, I'm one person, and I come to these chambers, council, this council chamber, and all of a sudden, I'd be another person. So, I always, I always, Mr. Woods, and to this council, try to see things not as black and white, but what's right and what's wrong. Now, what's right and what's wrong has been mentioned here several times today. Let's do what's right. Let's do what's right. Let's do what's right. But again, I'm saying that right isn't our own beholder. What appeared to be right for some is not what seemed to be right for others. What I'm saying, as a person of this council, and this, your issue came up almost six months after the previous council voted twice to put, in a little sort of, not as eloquent as yours, in the middle of inner-city communities.
That's correct.
And I said, "That's not fair." The councilperson from that district pleaded, "Do not..." We had churches, church members. We had the people from the Masonic Hall. Yeah, everybody came to this council as these members of the community here today, and they pleaded how this would affect their community and their neighborhood. And they chose to do what they did. I heard the commentary here loud and clear. I'm very sensitive to their concerns. I'm very sensitive to their concerns. And I said yesterday, Mr. Woods, "I would rather allow you to open up your establishment and let the market decide whether or not your business will prevail." If that neighborhood, if the 100 signatures and the neighbors of that community do not shop with you, you don't stand a benefit. You're not that little pretty.
I'm okay with that.
You know, and I'm just saying, I think we at a point now, because the thing that I mentioned, and I'm gonna continue to mention, is that if we're gonna be a city of progressive thinking, if we're gonna try to mend some of the ills of the past, then we must try to be consistent. What's what happens over there, what happened to this citizens, we should do what's right, and if it does not have an adverse effect, let it prevail to all citizens the same way. And I'm just saying, your record speaks for itself.
That's correct.
And the MPC did the due diligence and the research. And I see no problem. I see no problem, Mr. Woods, in allowing you the opportunity to establish another location. And I said, and you correct me if I'm wrong, there are...I mean, I'm not counting, I'm not counting, I'm counting the major liquor stores, but then we have all these mommy-pops shop that litters my district that I wish I can get rid of. But nevertheless, you're the only African-American that I know that owns and operates an establishment like this.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Woods, thank you. I like your professionalism and your character, and I hope that my colleagues will appreciate that as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, can I have Councilman-
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna yield to the councilwoman, then they'll come back to me.
You're too kind. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Fuller?
I just wanted to point out that the stipulations that were drafted were drafted by the MPC staff. That's all. Thank you.
Councilwoman Green?
Thank you. Well, Councilwoman, I wanted to commend you for bringing this. And then I wanted to commend you, Mr. Woods, for humbling yourself and saying, "Hey, man, whatever it takes, I'm willing to do it." I really appreciate the councilwoman for putting that on the table. And I appreciate you showing the type person that you are to say, "Hey, whatever it takes, it's done. I'll do whatever you ask me to do. Just let me prove myself." And I just think that every individual, every human being, has a right to prove themselves, not because somebody else did this. Judge me as to who I am. And I just think if we would look at individuals, and I think if we would, in this city, if we would just communicate and know one another, and it'll make a difference in our lives. But just because I...and the officer brought up about perception. Just because I see you as you, then I make my perception, and I don't think that's right. I just think that everybody ought to be judged on their own merits. And like I said, the councilwoman offered it. You didn't say, "I won't do that. I'd rather not have it." You said, "Yes, I'll do whatever it takes to do this, to let these folk know that I'm a top-of-the-line businessman." And I really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Councilwoman Fuller, you...that was it? Okay. I just, again, on that, I did, I had to say, and I couldn't sit here and just not say anything, and not just because your business is in my district, and Mr. Woods also lives in my district. I couldn't just sit here and not say one word as we trying to put stipulations at the end. And I'm not saying one thing negative or the other, but we didn't put stipulations on Thrifty. I don't want to put stipulations on Mr. Woods at this particular time either. I don't think that's, I don't think that's right. I don't think that's fair. Okay? He came up with a great, I think, a great plan, a great storefront. The store that he has now in my district is a nice place. I stopped there several times while he was there, while he wasn't there, while his wife was there, while his son was there. I've never seen the place dirty on the inside, dirty on the outside. I've been next door several times with property standards, and I don't know if Mr. Green is still here or not, but I've had them over there many times to make sure that they're keeping it clean. I never had that problem with Mr. Woods and his establishment. And people can take me at my word. I'm not gonna sit, I have no reason to sit here and lie. I'm not benefiting nothing from this. But I'm just, I have to speak and tell the truth of what I see. It has never, I've never seen, I've never seen the offices there. I've never seen kids in there. I've been to some stores, I've seen kids a lot in the store. I've never seen a kid. As a matter of fact, he turned around a kid when I was in there, told the parent the kid couldn't come in with him. I just want, I also spoke to Mr. Woods and told Mr. Woods that, this was two and a half years ago, that I did not want to vote for another liquor store close to a neighborhood, and his would be the last. This was my, that was my talk to him. Had I seen this place be anything different, I would look at it different. But I can't do that, and I'm not gonna do that. But I want everyone to know that Mr. Woods runs a decent establishment. I want you to know that because, and only because I've been knowing him operating in my area for this amount of time. And I just don't think it's right or fair for us to offer different times, all of a sudden, on the spot, while he's up here, when we could've talked to him about that last night, yesterday, last week.
Councilwoman Green?
Mr. Woods, the only reason I hadn't been in your store, my deacon's woman lied.
I did talk to him about it last week.
Okay. Is anyone else who had to speak? Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Nelson Cameron.
I mean, Mr. Woods?
I'm counsel for Mr. Woods.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, City Council members, my name's Nelson Cameron. I'm an attorney on 675 Jordan Street in Shreveport. And I represent Mr. Bernie Woods, and I'd like to say and compliment Mr. Bowman's remarks. Mr. Woods, I admire him. He was flying jets in the Vietnam War. He's a veteran. He runs a tight ship. And I know he does that at his place of business where he's at now, Lakeshore. Clean establishment, as you've already heard. I think that's a very good compliment for anyone such as that. I do want to, I've listened to the neighborhood citizens come forward and give talks in favor and against. And I'd like to say one thing, I'm probably not gonna tell you a whole lot of new things, but you look at, there's a place called Tony's Liquor over on Line Avenue. It's as close to Fairfield Magnet School as this location that we're deciding here is to Cresswell School. Tony's Liquor, it sells liquor. That's all liquor and beer and wine. So, that's a comparison we can make that exists in this city. There is no, at least I haven't, I live relatively close to Tony's Liquor. I haven't heard of any crime there. I haven't heard of crime at Fairfield Magnet School as a result of this operation of Tony's Liquor. A lot of people like to frequent that place, and I've gone there and bought some of the high-dollar liquor. And if you want a nice little rhyme, talking about other kinds of alcohol consumption, wine is fine, and it's only a dime. What I'm saying there is that as Circle K is open, Brookshires is open, they're serving wine. And I can tell you, there's a lot of people who like to drink wine, who walk pedestrians, who are in cars or whatnot. The lot of the issues that we see that have been brought forward by some of the opposition, it already exists. It exists in the environment that is there on King's Highway. And having hard liquor is not going to add to that. I'm with Lieutenant Sandra. She goes down King's Highway. She sees a lot of vacant buildings, the old Don Seafood, the old Chevron, Georgia's Grill, this location at the corner of Gilbert and King's Highway. Vacant buildings breed crime, just as well as alcohol might. But there's all kinds of conditions that breed crime. And vacant buildings is one of them. Broken windows is another. Say, you've got a petition of a thousand folks there. There are petitions being signed every day when people go into Circle K and Brookshires and buy beer and wine. There are folks in this area that like that type of alcohol. And we have the Mardi Gras parade in the area, and we also have the festivals at Columbia Park. There's a lot of folks in this area who enjoy the consumption of alcohol. I know my time's expired, but I'm gonna just continue on.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Mr. Cameron, it's good to see you again.
Oh, well, thank you.
I hadn't seen you since I was a baby.
I don't know if that was the same hospital, which hospital were you at?
Yeah, well, I'm the Claiborne Parish. Your Aunt Marie was in there.
Oh, Aunt Marie.
And she was very close, a friend of my family. What I wanted to ask you was, you know, this whole thing could've been resolved if we'd have passed the ordinance where Brookshires could handle the liquor. This whole thing could've been resolved. And so, but we're here today to deal with it.
Yes, sir.
And so, I think that, you familiar with the case Tufts versus City of Shreveport? I quoted as Calvary Baptist Church.
Yes, sir. I've read that case.
The suit is Roland Tufts, where he was asking for a zoning exception 1,500 feet from the synagogue or the church.
That was, that's the Baptist church, right.
But you familiar with that case where we went all through the appeals?
It's been a while since I read it.
The district court got overturned, the lower Court of Appeals, and then it was sent down to-
Well, if I remember correctly, Thrifty actually had to move their business, their location, a little bit farther away. But some of the questions they had in there is they had a drive-
Thrifty lost in that case at the Supreme Court.
Right. And I think they had to move to a different location. They finally got a location. But I think the big, one of the big issues there is that the opposition was able to show to the satisfaction of the MPC or the councils at that time, that there was a high risk of DWI because they had a drive-through. And they were also very close to a school. So, that was a huge risk. Here, we don't have that. We don't have a drive-through. And we're not serving alcohol and people who are, directly to people who are in vehicles.
Okay.
Good luck.
Any other questions, Mr. Cameron?
I just have to say one thing. I'm glad to hear you pronounce your street, Jordan.
Jordan.
There's not really any-
I did that on purpose. I figured you fellows would know.
Yeah, it's Jordan.
Most people want to hear Jordan, yes. But I do want to say one thing, if I can, just that this has been going on since August 22, 2017. And Mr. Woods, he didn't say this, but he's spent a lot of time and effort and money to get his business growing, and he's been deprived at a whole two years of time. But he could've had his business going and making a good income and employing 15, 20 employees and paying sales tax, which I understand is the largest generator of revenue for the city. Thank you.
Let me ask you one other question.
Yes, sir.
How do you feel about the constitutional right of the property owner to sell his property? Does this come into play on that?
The constitutional right of the-
Of him having the right, I mean, that landowner's sat there for two years-
Yes, with a contract.
And paid property taxes and hadn't received any income. How does that play into this?
That's a good question. I mean, this, you know, due process has been had, I believe. I mean, I can't say it hasn't been due process. This case, the reason why it's taken so long is you've had the MPC approval. He's had a green light all the way through, green lights. No red light from the city council because he had a tie vote, and the city attorney says tie vote means you didn't reverse the MPC, so we're still thumbs up. And then there's an appeal by the Gladstone Area Partnership and those folks. And the case has just sat there in the court. And the city has its representative, an attorney, representing it, but Mr. Woods did not have an attorney. So, the case kind of languished. The Gladstone Area Partnership filed a motion for summary judgment, if you know what that is. They're saying, "Hey, there's no issue of fact. Sure, your honor, you decide in our favor." The court did not do that. Then Gladstone took an appeal up to Louisiana Second Circuit Court of Appeal. The Court of Appeal denied reviewing, denied, they didn't rule on the merits, but they denied reviewing the case. And it was sent back down in January of this year. Then there, in June of this year, there was a trial setting. That was gonna be, I think, next week. It was gonna be the trial. But then the judge, he kind of decided, he punted, and decided he wanted to bring it back down to y'all, and let y'all take a vote on it. So, this vote by the MPC is precedent, is precedent for this body. And the city council did not overturn the MPC. And as you consider that as precedent, you need to consider very seriously before you try to overturn it. Thank you.
Mr. Neil Erwin?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Does this work?
Yes.
Okay. Members of the council and mayor, the Gladstone and Highland neighborhoods have done exactly what neighborhoods ought to do. They have organized themselves so that they can be heard because they're concerned about this use. Now, a liquor store is a legitimate business, but based on the city's basic rules under the UDC that you adopted, which is colorblind, it cannot be located wherever the applicant regardless wants it, regardless of how he hopes to operate. Liquor stores are allowed of right only in the C4 district, most intense commercial zoning district. The current location at Hearn and Lakeshore is located in C3, heavy commercial. It is different than the one that is being proposed now. Look at the difference in terms of the current location, which is C3, has completely vacant land behind it, and the proposed location, which is right in the heart of a residential area with residences behind it. You've heard from two principals, at least two heads of educational institutions, it's simply in the wrong location and violates the city's rules for a special- simply in the wrong location and violates the city's rules for a special use permit. It's the wrong location because it poses a genuine risk to the residential neighborhoods. We know this because the MPC said so last week. It said, although the proposed use in the same C2 at Centenary and Olive was for packaged liquor, the same types of issues, noise, loitering, littering, crime, parking issues, and even arrests, and even more violent crimes are associated with retail liquor establishments. The MPC found this last week, and the MPC unanimously denied packaged liquor in the Highland area, not very far from here. It's a wrong location because it's not compatible with the abutting or nearby residential neighborhoods. So it's a violation of your rules for special use permits. Massive citizen opposition, city council members who represent the area, Mr. Nicholson opposes it. Statements made today shows the lack of compatibility, and it's the wrong location because the city council vote on the Don Seafood location that was headed toward packaged liquor and the MPC vote show that a liquor store in this area is not the right use. There is a place for liquor stores. They are used by right in C4. The applicant's current C3 location is acceptable because there's no abutting residences, unlike the current location, none, and the only residences are cut off by dead-end streets from this location. And let's all remember, because it's...
I do have to, I have to note that your time has expired. I don't have a clock up, up there, but what additional point would you like to make?
Oh, I'd simply just like to say that there seems to be a misunderstanding about beer and wine and packaged liquor. Under the UDC, beer and wine is a use by right in C2 and up. However, liquor stores are different and have always been different in Shreveport, requiring a separate entrance and exit, and have all been treated differently. They are a special exception use, which is the same as a variance, and require specific review by you as city council members to make sure they are compatible, in this case with the residential areas around it, and pose no risk of harm. And I think you have sufficient evidence to show that it fails on those tests, and therefore the application should be denied with respect. Thank you.
Mr. Erwin.
Mr. Erwin.
Yes, sir.
Do you, are you saying that the MPC 63 vote was an error?
I do, because here's why.
Yes, sir.
They, that was, I think, the first case they dealt with as an MPC dealing with a variance now called a special use permit. And I believe it really was their first, that they had no background in terms of what was required for the review of a special use permit, and they have evolved since that time so that while they recommended approval of this, they recommended approval of the Don Seafood, which was overturned, last week they unanimously denied a packaged liquor in the same C2 at Olive and Centenary. So I do think they made an error. I'm not sure they would make the same recommendation today based upon the evidence of their vote last week.
Yes.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, those are all the timely requests we have to speak. I do see a member of the audience indicating that she would like to speak, and that's, I'll leave that to your discretion.
Councilman Bravford, did you have another? I was just, Mr. Erwin, I was just going to ask you this.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
That's fine, I, 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 I'll yield. Yeah, Mrs. Gail Griffin, Dr. Gail Griffin is in my district, and that was, that was an issue that, that came up several, several months ago, and I want to see, have, have that been addressed, Ms.?
Um, no, but can I take this order up about the liquor store and then I'll deal with that?
Well...
Would you prefer me to do that one?
Well, I, I want, I want, I want to address...
I can do that.
Okay.
Um, I tried my best to resolve a situation that I did not want to come to this point, and that's with water and sewage. I hand-delivered notes, I walked in some office, I've seen people face-to-face, I voiced my concern. My concern was, when the city council hired a contractor, and the establishment is on Greenwood Road, they went in several times on the state highway drilling whatever they needed to do to put that seal around the old pipe. I was all for it because I seen progress. I come to my establishment to open it, and it's sewage all, it's sewage all over the place. So I walked down the sidewalk, and I see a contractor, and I said, hey, I've got a problem. My establishment is going to be opening in the next two hours. It's sewage all over. So they call a lot of, they made a lot of phone calls. So finally, they got someone, the contractor out of Houston. I've got all his business cards and stuff like that. So I told him, I said, I'm due to open, we've just been highlighting magazines all over the country, and I said, everything needs to be sterilized and cleaned. Oh, well, you call the plumber, you do this. I said, no, I'm not calling the plumber, I'm not cleaning it up because you all are going to send the bill directly to me. So I made them call on their cell phone to get whatever company. So the mayor was at a meeting, and, and this is nothing new, I tried, mayor. I went to, I mentioned to several council people, they've tried. I went to some department heads, they've just all passed the buck and told me, oh, because the company said they cleaned it up, they put a security on Greenwood Road. I was right there, they did clean it up. They told me, they told me they would pay for loss of revenue. We were closed for one week. People were lined up, we couldn't even prepare anything because it wasn't sanitized. So I've written all kind of letters, I've spoke to several of the engineers, and, and I think they've done all they could, maybe all they can possibly do, but everybody will tell me, other than, oh, the company says they were just being nice to you for cleaning it up. Nice to me? I never had sewage problem at the place. It's going to be two years in December. I don't need niceness. I'm in the business of making money to pay my taxes like I'm supposed to.
Ma'am, your, your time has expired, but Mr. Mayor and Ms. Jones, could you assist this nice lady with her problem?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right.
And, um...
Ms. Griffin, this happened, we spoke about this before, and just to be clear, this happened two years ago, right? But are the contractors still working in the city? Have you been told that that's the case?
Well, since I've been complaining, they're not correcting, there was a loss of revenue.
No, I understand, I'm, I'm asking, so if this has been happening...
They dug up the alley again, and I have no idea what they're doing. It's a complete mess.
Has our water and sewer department told you whether or not this contractor's still here in Shreveport? That's what I'm asking.
Well, I've seen their...
And we can find out, I just, I just want to, want to know, you know, if you know what the topic is.
Well, I've got the name of the contractor that's working, but because there's so many contractors coming into the same holes, their subcontractors, I don't know if they're working underneath the contractor, but the chief, the city chief engineer is quite...
Okay, I would, I would imagine, so, I would imagine, the reason why I ask is because if they're still doing work for the city, and this is, you know, it's easier for us to contact, and also, if this happened two years ago, I'm not sure what kind of contract...
It was, it was a year ago. It would be, it would be a year ago and two more weeks.
It was a year, so it was la, okay, and that's another...
It happened last October.
Okay, so good, so, so contacting the company, and also, I'm not sure what kind of contract they were working under, but we will look into the contract to see if there's any, any clauses in it to which we can...
Well, we've done, we've done all of that. I've done all of that with your staff before coming here. I've done that with city council. So, you know, I would not, my point is, as a loyal taxpayer and voter, we don't need to award contractors that come out of Houston to disrupt our city and say, oh, we did part of the job to be nice. I never had sewage problem.
Yes, ma'am, I agree with you completely.
And I've got a loss of revenue, and I've got, I've got various departments telling me I have commercial equipment, they're charging me $700. We're just a regular kitchen-like in the home, serving the best food in Shreveport, but I'm not going to continue to fund a business out of my pocket and have to pay taxes. I'd rather go under. But I had a loss of revenue, and just like your budget person projected, you know about expenditures, you know about losses. Well, I'm at a loss.
I will get with staff and make sure that I understand the situation with what they have done so far, and I'll follow up with you.
Well, I want results at this point, you know, because I'm tired of dealing with it.
Yes, ma'am.
I've already got letters with stamp on it, and I'm ready to drop it off, and I'm just right down the street at the Greenwood Road Post Office. I don't want to do it, I've tried everything, I'm out of energy, and I'm a type of person, just like Bernie's son, support and document, that's all I live by, and I've got it. And if I have to take it further, any lawyer will go all the way back from October up to now. It won't be just that small lawsuit that I calculated. You know? I've tried, all I can say, I've tried.
Ms. Jones, you, you, you've committed to work with Ms., Ms., Dr. Griffin to bring resolve to this issue, is that right?
Yes, sir, I'm going to reach out to staff and make sure that I have a full understanding of what has occurred and what they have done, and then I'll reach out to you, Ms. Gill.
Please, please let the council know what, what, what resolution you came to, okay?
I sure will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, those are all the requests to speak.
Okay. I did want to, just because of the purpose that the young man has been here since right after school and did not know that he was supposed to put a request to speak for him in, I'm going to ask the council if you would allow student council president to come up and give him three minutes to speak tomorrow.
I'm real strict about putting this seat in, next time, make sure you come, please. Request to speak for me.
You think he's ever coming back after this five-hour meeting?
I believe I have to give my address, so my address is 618 Cumberland Drive. I actually came here because my mom was speaking earlier, and so I came here, and then I realized I wanted to speak as well. So, thank you, Mayor Perkins, council members, and Chairman Bowman. My name is Robert Lawrence, and I am the student council president at CE Bird High School. I did not come here tonight to speak. However, when I arrived, I was met with a stark reality. No other student was going to be heard regarding this matter. While I am here, and I would like to share my story. The area where Mr. Woods would like to place his store is where I attend school. No, I do not have research prepared or millions of dollars invested into properties around this area. However, every Tuesday for the past two years, I have been a classroom aide at Cresswell Elementary. Every week, Bird students assist these kindergarteners in everything from learning to cut a straight edge to practicing writing their names. Almost every time we are in the classroom, we discuss the short eight years when those kindergarten students will cross King's Highway and enter my school, CE Bird High School. Now, I do not mean cross the street in a metaphorical sense. I mean quite literally, the majority of those kindergarten students we assist every Tuesday will leave their houses and cross King's Highway to enter the campus of CE Bird High School in eight years from now. In those eight years, a lot can change, and the fact of the matter is that there are far better options than a liquor store for the success of the area in those eight years' time. Well, not, why not appeal to the more 2,000 students at my school alone and open a business we can and will support? I guarantee, Mr. Woods, that if you opened a Burger King, Chick-fil-A, or Taco Bell instead of a liquor store at 327 West King's Highway, you will do just as much business or more, patroned by the students of that area. Mr. Woods, you have presented yourself as a principal, principled and honorable businessman, and thus, and thus I ask you, why must you establish, why must you establish a business which isolates a customer base which resides within two blocks of your proposed location eight hours a day, five days a week, and 36 weeks throughout the year? Mr. Woods, in eight years, when those kindergartens, kindergarten classmates at Cresswell Elementary cross King's Highway to attend CE Bird High School, my high school, give them a business in which they can stop by and grab breakfast. Give them a business, business which will improve their community. Thank you.
Well, well said, young sir.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just wanted to add that he's also on the board for the team advisory board for step forward, Councilman Bradford.
I actually came, that's where I was before that, and then I came, I ran, actually just ran down three blocks this way to come here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I believe we're prepared to debate this appeal to the extent of debate is necessary.
All right. All right, I'll start. Councilman Nicholson?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate all the remarks that have been made here today regarding this application to place a liquor store in my district at the intersection of Gilbert and Kings. I'm confident that the minds of my colleagues are made up, but I will offer these brief remarks. First, this appeal is not about Mr. Woods or who he is. I've never met Mr. Woods and do not know him, but my good friends and colleagues, Councilman Bradford and Councilman Green, have known him all their lives and are close personal friends with him, and when they say that he is an honorable man and a good businessman, I accept that without hesitation. And, and so, this has nothing to do with him or his character or the type of store that he would run if the application were granted, nor is this about past mistakes that our predecessors have made. When Councilman Bradford complains that inner-city communities in his district are littered with liquor stores because of poor decisions that past councils have made to grant licenses to place those liquor stores near residential communities, I accept that, and I regret it. It shouldn't have happened, and I hope that after we leave this decision, my colleagues will join me in revisiting the manner and degree to which we regulate the sale of liquor in this community. I think it leaves a lot to be desired. What this appeal is about is whether we should grant a special use permit to allow a liquor store to be located in a C2 commercial corridor district that is immediately adjacent to a residential neighborhood in my district and across the street from the Highland Community and Councilwoman Fuller's district. I've heard all the evidence, and I've carefully studied the record, and in my view, there is no principled reason to conclude that that use would be compatible with the use of the surrounding area. I oppose a liquor store in this location, just as I will oppose a liquor store adjacent to any residential property in the city. That's just not where liquor stores belong. My friend and colleague to my right, Councilman Flurry has mentioned Tupe's versus the City of Shreveport, which is a court case in which the Supreme Court of Louisiana considered whether the city council acted appropriately when it denied, when it denied a, a special use permit to Mr. Tupe's, who owns Thrifty Liquor. The Supreme Court found that the city council had acted appropriately in denying that special use permit, and it noted in that decision that the council acted in response to specific concerns raised by citizens concerning potential increases of traffic and crime in the event the special exception was granted. And the court found that the council... And the court found that the council's decision was appropriate and well-founded based on concerns about public safety. I think the same is true here. We've had more than, as last I checked, there were 1,300 signatures on the online petition that we've referenced. So, we have had an overwhelming expression of opposition from the neighborhoods that will be impacted by this, and so I ask my colleagues, please, to join me in reversing the MPC and in refusing to locate a liquor store at this location. Thank you.
Councilman Butcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna make my, my comments very brief. I, I wanted to say there's a couple things. First, whenever I was talking to Mr. Woods, the younger Mr. Woods, no offense, Mr. Woods, but about, about real estate values, I started out, and I believe you remember, I said, "On both sides, I, I'm concerned if you hear it's gonna depreciate or it's gonna not depreciate, I would like to see some hard facts on that." And that's just because of what I do, so I don't, you know, I, I heard that Councilman Green and Councilman Bradford seemed to think I was picking, but I wasn't. I just was asking questions. So, secondly, I wanna say this, there was a video on Facebook the other day of the inside of Mr. Woods' store at Hearn and Lake Shore. Somebody went in there and bought some things, and, you know, I've passed it numerous times, it never stopped, but I've passed the store. It's always very clean and well-kept on the outside. But what struck me the most about that video was the cleanliness of the inside of the store, and then Mr. Woods' attitude to his customers. There was one segment there where he was checking somebody out, and it reminded me of when, when I grew up and there was a local store there, and the man that owned the store was always the guy taking your money, and he was always very courteous and kind, and I could see that in Mr. Woods. He didn't always be in video, I don't think. And, and it was, it, it, it made me think about this a lot, so I don't want anything about decisions that I'm making today have anything to do with who Mr. Woods is, because I honestly do think he's a, he's, he's a really genuinely good businessman, and I appreciate his service in the, in the military. So, this is not personal for me in any way. I, I've, I've debated on this back and forth, because I also am extremely business-friendly, and I wanna, I wanna offer opportunities to all businesses. I would feel better personally if there was a buffer behind the store, if it was like a business buffer behind it of some sort, and it wasn't a button up to, right up to residential. That would make me feel a little bit better, because you've got commercial on the corners, you have commercial next to it, but behind it, it's, it's residential. That would make me feel better. I'm also of the opinion that Councilman Nicholson is, of, you know, I can attest to the sins of, of former councils. One of the stores that was mentioned was Yuri Drive and Turtle Creek, the one south by university. I probably would, would not have voted for that to go there at this point. The one at Strat, I, I was thinking, actually, I was trying to think while we were talking about all this, any liquor stores that backed up to residential, because I liked that buffer between them, and the first thing that popped into my mind, Mr. Woods, was what you mentioned at Stratford and Yuri, it does, it abuts up to Brawmore, but I didn't make that decision, and nobody sitting up here did make that decision. So, I don't wanna be held to the, you know, to the sins of, of former councils or, or, you know, the city. I, I do think, though, that, that I will make this pledge that from this point forward, if this comes up in any neighborhood in Shreveport, I will be in line with my colleague, Councilman Nicholson, and I will not vote for it. I, I just think that right now we have, when, when it abuts a residential property, I just, for some reason, I just have problems with it. So, and it's nothing personal against y'all, if it was Thrifty asking to do this, I'd do the same thing. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Butcher. Councilwoman Fuller?
Thank you, Chair. I have a prepared statement, but I wanna point out that part of the issue really is the way that our land use is designated. This area is a C2, but where Tony's Liquor is, is an urban corridor, and it abuts residential, probably about 50 feet. The only buffer right there between that liquor store and the house on Dillingham, I believe, is probably some trees. Where we're looking at right now, it's about 84 feet, but it's a C2. And when we're looking at this right now, the only thing I really see is that we have to go back and remove the special, the, the potential for special use from the Unified Development Code for any liquor store in any neighborhood in a C2 and possibly a C3, and now I'm gonna read my statement. "The opposition may not feel that this is racially motivated, but to overturn the MPC determination would be to act inconsistently, and to discriminate by not maintaining the same precedent held in poor black communities, and to also deny an African-American proprietor an opportunity to participate in the market. I'm troubled with everything about this case. I'm troubled that this is the only business that the landlord or the owner seems satisfactory to sell the space to. I resent that this is so close to my home. I resent that prior councils never deemed it necessary to clean up our legislation to protect all neighborhoods from predatory businesses with malignant records for contributing to neighborhood deterioration. No offense, Mr. Woods. Mr. Woods has a clean store. I did a site visit and found his property to be well-kept inside and out. What I also noticed was that the only neighboring business was a dollar store, and that the three corners of the intersection were vacant and blighted. I don't wish this for my neighborhood, my community, or my district. I wish it was enough to proclaim that, that today, that not only will I oppose a special permit, but any other in close proximity to residential property. This store is 84 feet from a single-family occupied home. But it's not enough to promise that. I would stand in opposition because our policies should not allow this use potentially in anyone's neighborhood. I wanna point out that the community standing in opposition to this store also opposed a white-owned gas station, wine store, and restaurant proposed for a block west of this location. Where that location lacks commercial neighbors, it buffered residential with landscaping and parking. The community was heard and the application was denied, but that doesn't assuage my concerns that a wine shop, two-piece Nini, or a purveyor of fine spirits might not have seen such resistance. More than even that, the issue that remains is that there is a double standard in how these policies are applied. I hope that the council will consider the strident amendments and stipulations I've proposed, and as much as I wouldn't wanna really see this go through, I hope that if we support, that you all in the future and the community will support changes to our legislation moving forward. Thank you."
Any other council member?
May I make a, a comment about the procedures? I understand that.
Councilman Butcher?
Mr. Thompson has advised me that this is a bit different than motions to amend legislation in, in that we will, we may have serial motions here, one after another, until one passes, and so, just as a, as a way of reaching decision, I would like to make a motion to reverse the MPC and deny the application. I understand that that motion will fail, but after it fails, Councilwoman Fuller will make her motion, and that one may well pass based on my vote counts. So, I move to reverse the MPC's decision and to deny the special use permit for the liquor store at issue in this appeal.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilman Butcher, to deny the MPC request. Is there any discussion about that? Seeing none? Please vote. That motion fails? For three.
I'd like to make a motion to uphold the MPC's determination with a stipulation that we limit the hours of operation from, like, closing hours of 9:00 PM, and that we also accept the other stipulations in line number seven that were discussed and presented earlier. Do I need to read all of them aloud?
Was there a second?
Well, I wanna, I'll second the motion, but I wanna make sure I understand. I understand Councilwoman Fuller's motion to be, to modify the MPC's decision as reflected in the written motion that's been distributed with the single modification that the hours of operation are to be 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, rather than 8:00 PM.
What about number seven? Is that included?
Yes.
I second the motion with that understanding.
It's been motion by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Nicholson, to modify the MPC's decision. Councilman Bradford?
Mr. Chairman, the, the modifications was made by MPC that was mentioned, I think the gentleman, Mr. Woods, concurred to all of them, basically, except for the closing time. So, I'd like to make a substitute motion that the closing time would be, I mean, the time would be 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. That's my amendment, Mr. Chairman. I mean, substitute motion.
So, you would include everything that's in her motion, except the closing time?
That's correct.
And that closing time is 8:00 AM to?
11:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman, my only discussion on that is to urge my colleagues to vote no to the substitute motion, so that we can return to the main motion. So, my request to my colleagues is to vote no on Councilman Bradford's.
Is, is there, was there a second?
There, there has been.
I think some people already voted, so I wanna make sure that y'all are on the same page.
Let's clear, let's clear the board.
I'm sorry? Can you clear? Can you close?
Let's close it. And, and so is there a second to the substitute motion?
Which is 11 o'clock?
Yes.
Which the MPC gave.
12. 12.
They said 12. Mr. Woods, your, what is your preference? It was 12, right? I just wanted to make sure he didn't agree with the 11 o'clock is what I was asking. I just wanna make sure I'm on the same page. He acted 12.
Mr. Chairman, is there a second? Or are you trying to find out?
All right. So, what's, this is, say the motion again, Mr. Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, my, my motion is that, the substitute motion is that the closing time would be at 11:00 PM instead of 9:00 PM. Well, the, the time was, was inclusive to, to all the days that you opened.
But he had 11, he had 12 on Friday and Saturday.
Where?
No, he had 12 o'clock period.
Yeah, 12 o'clock period, I mean, throughout, throughout the tenure of his, of his operation.
Friday and Saturday, 12.
11 o'clock. So, Mr. Chairman, let me restate, and I think Mr. Woods has concurred that he can accept 11 o'clock closing time instead of 9 o'clock closing time. So, I'm, I'm making a... Mr. Chairman, excuse me one second.
Gentlemen, I've, I've got four votes for 9 o'clock, so that's, I mean, we can...
Oh, you got four votes?
I, I got four votes for what Ms. Fuller proposed.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'm gonna withdraw my, my motion.
Okay.
Okay, so what's, what's the motion on the vote?
To, to restate Councilwoman Fuller's motion. Uh, her motion is to modify the MPC's decision as stated in the written motion, which has been distributed to all members, with the single modification that the hours of operation will be 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And I've seconded that motion. And Councilman Bradford has withdrawn his substitute motion.
One other question I may ask. Mr. Woods said that normal time of opening is at 9 o'clock, so...
But that's okay. What, what, I'm, I think Mr. Woods can be open at any time within these hours. We're not making him open at 8 o'clock. If you wanna change it to 9 o'clock, that'd be...
No, what I was about to say was, since he, he chooses to open at 9, then if he's not gonna open at 8, then we could at least give him a different time to close.
Councilman, you're my dear friend, you know that, but this is a, this is a very modest restriction which will ameliorate the consequences.
I'll be humble like Mr. Woods.
I appreciate that.
Call for a question, Mr. Chairman.
And I encourage my colleagues to vote yes on this motion.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, can you state the motion, so everyone will know what we're doing?
Once more, since I'm, I'm speaking for you, Councilwoman Fuller. Councilwoman Fuller's motion has been distributed in writing and discussed. Her motion is to modify the MPC's decision in the manner described in her written motion with the single change that the hours of operation will be 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. That is the motion. And Mr. Bradford has called for the question.
Been motion by Council, Councilwoman Fuller, and second by Councilman Nicholson. Hours of operations from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Yes, sir.
If there's no other discussion, please vote. And motion carries. Six to one. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Fuller's motion carried to close at 9:00 PM.
Order the day?
At past six to one.
Mr. Chairman, we now have the reports from officers, boards, and committees.
Seeing none? Does any council member, is there a clerk's report? I'm sorry.
The only thing is, we discussed yesterday the appointment of Mr. Oliver Jenkins to the Shreveport Airport Authority.
Did we, are we, okay, what are we doing on that?
We, we discussed yesterday, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Jenkins came before us yesterday. We, we was asking, I was asking, is there urgency to see him with any pending business that are, that are, that we're coming up?
Yes, Councilman, we're in the process of selecting our next airport director. They've pushed the date, I think, now to October 23rd or 25th. So, the sooner that Mr. Jenkins can be placed in that position, the better, so that he can cast his vote.
With that said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suspend the rules.
Mr. Chairman, we need to add it to the agenda.
To add to the agenda, yeah.
To add it?
Been motioned, been motioned by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Green to add.
Mr. Chairman, we now need to see if anybody from the public wishes to speak.
Is anyone wanna speak for or against adding this item to the agenda on Oliver Jenkins? Seeing none? Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
It's been added to the agenda, Mr. Chairman. I now motion to suspend the rules to take it up at this time.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Green and second by Councilwoman Fuller.
This is for confirmation?
To add.
To add. Okay. To take it up.
To take it up.
Just suspend the rules to take it up.
Please vote. And motion carries with seven.
Motion to confirm the...
It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by the chair, confirm Mr. Jenkins. If there's no other discussion, please vote. And motion carries with seven.
Motion to confirm the.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and seconded by the chair. Confirm Mr. Jenkins. If there's no other discussion, please vote.
They used to get them confused when they was working together.
And motion carries with seven.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any other, any additional communication?
I'd like to make most sense is, quarter to nine, we may stay here till tomorrow. We got food, we got plenty of food tomorrow.
I just want to wish Danielle a very happy early birthday. I kept her very late, and so she's. Tomorrow is her birthday, and she got to spend the night with you guys, so that's great.
Any additional communication from any council member? Mayor Perkins, any additional communication?